Excellent. Great, I'm assuming we can start now. So, good morning, everyone, and welcome to County Council. It is June 24th. I want to welcome everyone to this meeting, and I call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, may we please have roll call?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Good morning, everyone. We have all members of Gray County Council in attendance, with the exception of Councillor Mackie, and we welcome Councillor Greg, representing Councillor Mackie today.
Good morning, Councillor Greg. Welcome to the team.
Thank you. Good morning.
Okay, we'll start with our land acknowledgement. We acknowledge with respect the history, spirituality, and culture of the Ania Shinnabek, the Six Nations of the Grand River, the Howden O'Shannon, and the Wendat, Wyndat, Wyandot peoples, on whose traditional territories we gather, and whose ancestors signed treaties with our ancestors. We also recognise the Metis and the Inuit, whose ancestors shared this land and these waters. May we all, as treaty people, live with respect on this land and live in peace and friendship with all of its diverse peoples. Council, next, we're moving to item number four. Do we have any declaration of interest, pecuniary or otherwise? Seeing none, I will just say that if one does arise during the course of the meeting, I would ask you to declare it at that time. Item number five A, we're dealing now with County Council and Committee of the Whole minutes, which are dated June 10th, 2021. That is moved by Councillor Keveney and seconded by Councillor Decide. Do we have any discussion on these minutes? And I will call the question. Is there anyone opposed? Seeing none, that is Carrie. Thank you very much. Item five B is the Long Term Care Redevelopment Planning Task Force Minutes, which were dated June 3rd, 2021. They're being moved by Councillor Robinson and seconded by Councillor O'Leary. Any discussion on those minutes? Seeing none, once again, I will call the question. Is there anyone opposed? No hands showing. I will say that that too is Carrie. Thank you very much. Moving right along to good news and celebrations, and I have to say, I'm going to start. I see your hand, Councillor Decide. Father's Day just passed, and I got to tell you, I got the cutest card from one of my children, which included certificates. And the certificates were for personal services, like I will get you any drink, the drink of your choice from the fridge, and a one-minute shoulder rub. And it was a five-minute shoulder rub, to which I asked, can I combine them and get like a, you know, a six-minute shoulder rub? Know that. It's one minute and five minutes, so there you go. Anyways, Councillor Decide.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. You're a lawyer, so I'm sure you'll find a loophole on the one-minute and five-minute shoulder rubs. Gives me, gives me great pleasure, Mr. Warden, to announce at County Council that the Southeast Grey Community Health Centre recently held their 10th Annual General Meeting. It was held on Tuesday evening, and we had a few members of County Council in attendance, and they're all as mayor and deputy mayor. So, in Southeast Grey Community Health Centre, Warden Hicks plays an important role in the delivery of primary health care in the southern parts of Gray County. Over the last 10 years, they've become the best-performing CHC in the province, and they've, they have further, they've purchased the building that they started out in, in Markdale, and they've begun construction, or they've begun the process of constructing a brand-new facility in Dundalk to better serve the roster that they have in Dundalk. And it's, it's just, I want to extend a congratulations to the members who serve on that board, and the members who served in the past. And recently, we had the, the most recent chair retired. I'm drawing a blank on the name right now. I'm normally very good with names. Maybe I'm just getting old. And the Executive Director, Al Madden, retired as well. And so, a hearty congratulations to both. And I don't know if Councillor Woodbury has anything further to add. He serves on the board with me.
Councillor Woodbury is shaking his head no. Well, thank you for that, Councillor Decide. Then, whose hand did I see? I thought I saw Councillor Soever, but maybe not.
Councillor Soever and Councillor Gamble.
Excellent. Councillor Soever, go right ahead.
Yes, a couple of things. You know, we, it's my honour and pleasure to tell the council that Bill Abbot has been awarded the Province of Ontario Senior Award, a Senior of the Year Award in the Blue Mountains. And this award was established by the province in 1994 to honour one outstanding local senior in each municipality in Ontario. And Bill is our nominee this year. And I was able to present the award to him yesterday. And Bill has a lifetime of service to the community. And, you know, as he's become a senior, he's become much more involved, in fact. And this year, Bill added being a vital part of the planning and organisation of the volunteers and logistics for the vaccination clinics at the Beaver Valley Community Centre to his long list of volunteer activities. He's also been a regular volunteer in the town's grants and donation programme, meal events like Lobster Fest, Oktoberfest, and the Christmas Meal. And he regularly delivers meals as part of the weekly programme run by the Anglican Church. This is just a small part of Bill's activities. He's also very involved in the Marsh Street Centre and assisting with stage setup. And as a sound technician, he set up the IT for the local medical clinics. But perhaps, in terms of Gray County, Bill is best known, and he's probably very well-known to the staff as well, because he's volunteered for a number of years in the active transportation. Bill's an avid cyclist. And so, he was instrumental in advancing the paid shoulders and the cycling and trails plan. And, you know, so, Bill, I don't know how he does it all, but, you know, he's, he's involved in almost everything. So, it's great that we were able to honour him and give him that award from the province. So, it's great. These community volunteers like Bill, they're what make the town of Blue Mountains in Gray County the great place it is, and it'd be a far lesser place without them. Also like to acknowledge the community volunteers that are organising the second-dose clinics for people who got their first dose here in various clinics at the community centre, and also through the Mefor Doctors. So, I want to thank the health unit for making the vaccine available to the Owen Sound Family Health Team, who's giving the second dose to people who got their first dose in Mefor. One clinic is, they're running a clinic here at the Beaver Valley Community Centre on the 29th. And also, our own local doctors are running a bunch of clinics to make sure that all of the people who got their first doses here in the town of Blue Mountains get their second dose before the 16-week window runs out. So, that is all good news, and that's all I have.
Thank you very much, Councillor Soever. I too was excited to read about Bill receiving the award. And, boy, he's, he's an exceptional individual. And I have to say, he's probably the fittest senior that I know. Next, Councillor Gamble.
Hi, everybody. Just a small item, but we're pretty proud of it in Chatsworth. When you're going through Chatsworth, you'll see that there's new benches, new flower arrangements, and new garbage containers. And they really brighten up the street in Chatsworth way and certain ways, bro. So, we're kind of proud of that. Have a look.
We cheer well. Thank you for updating us on that. Beautification is always welcome. I don't see any other... Oh, my apologies, Councillor Decide.
No worries at all. So, the most recent past president was Jane DeYoung. I couldn't remember the last thing. I apologize for that. The, I also, and this is more often than not, the Grey Bruce Health Unit put out a call for volunteers at the Hockey Hub Clinics. And I've signed up. So, if any, if any of you lovely people would like to volunteer with a pretty, pretty amazing guy, you know, and that's other people's words in many cases, some cases, few, very few cases. Well, my mum says I'm pretty cool. Do sign up as well. They have the, the link to sign up on their social media. And I do hope to see a few of you out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Decide. And you left yourself open, so I'm going to say, thank goodness for moms. I think that's it, right, Madam Clerk?
I don't see any other hands, Mr. Warden.
Okay. Thank you very much, everyone. So, we will now move for adjournment. Adjournment has been moved by Councillor Decide and seconded by Councillor Patterson. Any opposed? Not seeing none. We will take a second to move over to our next. New Committee of the Whole. Let's give me a second to get things positioned here. Okay, I'm ready to go. If you want to start that. Thank you, Olivia. So, we are now meeting as a Committee of the Whole, and I will call this meeting to order. Council, is there any declaration of interest, pecuniary or otherwise? Seeing none. And once again, I would ask that if one does arise during the course of the meeting, I would ask that you would declare it at that time. Item three, we're dealing with several delegations. The first delegation is the Kimberley Safety Group, and I believe we have David Nels and Martha Rogers, concerning community safety opportunities.
So, I'm just going to bring them into the meeting, Mr. Warden. I think Ms. Rogers is going to be the presenter and share her screen. Yes.
I, do I need to share my screen? I don't have a PowerPoint, but do you want me to?
If you're just going to speak to the discussion paper that was included in the agenda, that's perfectly fine.
That's, that's fine. That's what I intend to do.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Warden, Honourable councillors, staff, and visitors. David and I are two members of the Kimberley Safety Group, better known as the Kimberley Group of Seven. We are delighted to be here today to talk about our proposal for a safe, healthy, and prosperous future for Kimberley and the surrounding areas. The proposal that you received in advance of this meeting was actually presented to the CAOs and the staff of Gray County and Gray Highlands Municipality in March of this year. On May 21st, we made a deputation to Gray Highlands Council and received unanimous support to work together on the development of a large federal healthy communities grant application, which we have done. And the final touches are being put on it today. It will be submitted likely tomorrow. We'd like to thank everybody who contributed to the development of that application. We are quite thrilled. We thought we would take this 10 minutes to highlight some aspects of the proposal and would be happy to receive your feedback or answer any questions that you may have. The Kimberley, I'm going to start with a bit of context. First of all, Kimberley is the village that's in the centre of the Beaver Valley, which of course is part of the Niagara escarpment, and is exquisitely beautiful, and is of ecological and historical importance. Kimberley is often known as the anchor village of the Beaver Valley Corridor. Its arms extend outward north to the residential communities of Talisman and Amick, and to the south to the Beaver Valley Ski Club homes. Kimberley is a magnet for skiers and cyclists, hikers, nature lovers, people who simply want to seek solace in the natural environment, or to move into the, to go into the Kimberley Village itself, to buy groceries, pick up a meal at one of the two restaurants, go to the library, or attend one of the many cultural and artistic events that normally happen at the Kimberley Hall. We are seeing tremendous growth and vibrancy in the village and the surrounding areas. As you probably know, many, many seasonal residents are choosing to live in the area now. Last year, there was a 40% increase in housing sales in and around Kimberley. And we are seeing many, many more visitors who are coming up to access the multiple trail systems. It is not unusual these days to see eight or 10 cars parked along Gray 13 on both sides of the road at trail access points. It is, it is quite outstanding. So, we're seeing tremendous growth and vibrancy, but at the same time, we are also witnessing an exponential growth in the volume and speed of traffic, including heavy truck commercial traffic. And this is shedding light on a well-documented and very real concern for the health and safety of people, animals, and the natural environment in the area. The Kimberley Safety Group arose to try and address this challenge after 129 people signed a petition expressing concern about road safety in the area. We wanted to approach it in a way that was constructive and evidence-based, and that would be community-engaged. We, we hope that we have achieved this goal. We have had letters of support from 12 decent-sized organisations and more than 100 individuals. When we began this process, we, we did an extensive review of the literature, and we looked at road safety, particularly in rural communities in Europe, the UK and North America. We've also studied the Canada Road Safety Strategy for 2025, and are very pleased to see that road safety for vulnerable road users such as pedestrians, horses and buggies, and cyclists is now considered a human right in the Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedoms. We applaud this movement. As concluded in that document, and as we found in our review of the literature, when you're dealing with road safety, there is no single one intervention that works or one silver bullet that resolves the problem. It requires a really comprehensive and integrated approach to the strategy. So, this is what we've attempted to do in the proposal. We've taken a healthy community's lens to situate safety as a social determinant of health. And within that context, we have put together a number of strategies that we've, that woven together will address, we hope, the health and safety of people in and around the village of Kimberley. It essentially, the strategies focus on slowing traffic coming into through and out of Kimberley, and creating much more safer, accessible mobility options for pedestrians and cyclists alike of all ages and mobile and abilities. So, why is this proposal important? We believe it's important, first of all, because it does reflect a regional commitment to Canada's Road Safety Strategy for 2025, and to the Vision Zero Agenda, which we believe is, is a lofty and desirable goal. We believe that this reflects the healthy communities movement across Canada and around the world. We also think that this demonstrates a highly community-engaged process, which is great, and is a commitment of the county and the municipality. We see this as dovetailing beautifully with the Master Trails Plan. And we certainly believe that this is advancing the strategic priorities that have been articulated by the county and the municipality and their strategic plans. So, we are here today to ask a couple of things. First of all, we would like your continued support for this proposal. We are asking for a motion that would direct staff to work with us in collaboration with the municipality to further develop an implementation plan that would outline a critical path and annual deliverables, in keeping, of course, with your planning and budgetary cycles. One of the strategies in the proposal is related to the slowing of traffic from the gateways at Kimberley into the village, going from 80 to 40, to 80 to 60 to 40. In the Canada's Road Safety Strategy, they say that in community safety zones, which Kimberley is one, the posted speed should be 30. And this is based on research around the world that shows that at 30, fatal accidents reduce by 80%. We are not asking for 30, but we are, we believe there is sufficient, more than sufficient evidence to support progressive reduction from 80 to 60 to 40. We understand that the municipality must put forward a request to have this done, and we're working with them with hopes that that will happen, so that the bylaw changes can be made, and that is planned for mid-July. So, I'm mentioning it because of some time issues. We also believe that considerations should be given to reducing the speed on Gray Road 13 north of the village of Udineha to 60 kilometres, as was done on Gray 119. That decision was taken because of high cycle volumes on the road, and because of the steep and undulating road. We have exactly the same conditions. Last summer, we had 6,000 cyclists in the village of Kimberley. They're using Gray 13. And also, it's, it's very obvious where the road starts its steep descent down the, through the valley and into the village. We are asking for the consistent application of a policy decision that's already been taken. And finally, we hope that at some point in the near future, that some discussion will be had regarding the elimination of heavy truck traffic on Gray 13 altogether. Gray 13 bisects four villages and hamlets on its way from Four to Thornbury. This is three to four times as many population centres as potential alternate routes. This is unduly putting people at risk. And we know that where cyclists and truck, heavy trucks share the same road, there's a 30% increase in cyclist accidents. This is simply unacceptable. So, we believe that this kind of discussion would be terrific to have. We'd like to thank you this morning for listening to us regarding our proposal for a safe and healthy and prosperous future for Kimberley. We believe that is in the best interest of the region and the municipality, and we thank you and would welcome any comments or questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation, Ms. Rogers. And Mr. Nels, is there anything that you want to add? I'm going to take that as no. Okay, council, any questions? Councillor Soever, whoever?
Yes. So, thank you for that presentation, and it highlights a very significant problem that we're seeing throughout the county. And I think we're gonna, this will be, you know, come to the forefront more and more, as we see that, you know, post-COVID, we are changing the way we live, in that there's going to be a lot more people working from home. So, in terms of infrastructure for, there will be more people living here. This is a very nice place to live. And, and so, we've seen from the real estate prices and the boom in the last little while that, you know, people are moving up here. And, you know, we, we will actually probably see over the next 20 years, a huge change in the way our country looks. We, we were largely a rural area in, in the 1800s. And then, we became, Canada as a whole, became urbanised as people moved into large cities. And now, we're seeing, you know, people decentralise and move to the outlying areas of these large cities. And perhaps, they will be, you know, living here five days a week and commuting into work two days a week. There's a lot that's still up in the air. We don't know. Recent news articles and studies have indicated that perhaps up to 50% of companies will allow people to work from home more and more. So, this does put pressure on county roads and trails. And so, on this raises a couple of interesting things. The, you heard when we were talking about the, the urban roads a few weeks ago at the county, that the, the county roads are not designed for pedestrians. So, here we have a, a county road, which the proposal, you know, does introduce sidewalks and, and things like this. So, this is a county road. And, you know, we heard from staff a few weeks ago that county roads aren't really designed for pedestrians. So, clearly, this is something we have to wrestle with as a county. And in terms of our policy and in our, you know, county road engineered cross-sections, what, what do we actually need in urban areas where county roads go through urban areas, and how do we deal with that? And so, but the one interesting thing that I do have a question on is the, there was mention of trucks and cyclists shouldn't be on the same road. Yet, our, our trails and cycling plan, which we just approved, a lot of the cycle routes on county roads, where the truck traffic is there. And of course, traffic is vital also to our economy. I mean, the pedestrians and tourism is, is important. But, you know, we are an agricultural community. And, you know, I think of, in the Blue Mountains, you know, during apple harvest season, a lot of large trucks pulling trailers or tractors pulling trailers full of apples. You know, the, the county roads are the main highways of commerce, not only for our farmers, but for other businesses as well. So, we, we do need to look at how those pedestrians and, and businesses and bicycles interact. And so, I guess, the question I have to the deputation is, how do, banning trucks on, what do they see the solution? I don't see banning trucks on County Road 13. I know it's not an ideal road for trucks, but it's still one of the only, given our topography, there aren't that many options. So, what do they see as options for, for that? I don't see that banning trucks will be an option. So, how do we work around that and still keep everybody safe?
So, thank you, Councillor Soever. Ms. Rogers or Mr. Nels, anything to add?
Warden Hicks, may I answer the question here, or attempt? So, we're not saying banning trucks. It's just that what we're saying is, is that there's a fair, a huge increase in truck traffic. And being that the Gray Road 13 kind of starts in Thornbury and ends at County Road, or at, yeah, County Road, or no, I guess it's Highway Number Four, south of Lake Eugenie, the trucks are either going east or west. So, all we're saying is, perhaps, rather than going through a well-populated area of Gray Road 13, they, they shift over. If they're going east, they would go to County Road Two, or if they're going west, they go to County Road 12. So, it's, it's a matter of not having any truck traffic. It's just, if you stand on a day and you, you, you sit for an hour, the, the number of trucks, and being that it's, you're coming down into Kimberley, and you're going out of Kimberley, the, the greenhouse gas emission has to be huge going up or down one of those, one of those hills, either the Epping Hill, or up the Beaver Valley Hill on the south side of Kimberley. So, it's, it's, it's a matter of doing a, a relook at, at the traffic of, the truck traffic and, and doing an analysis on different roads. So, I don't know when the last time that was done, but it may be something that council may want to, with staff, have a look at. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councillor Soever, anything? You're muted, Councillor Soever.
Thank you for that. And I, I think that does highlight one of the critical things that we do need to tackle in short order, is that we don't have a county master transportation plan. The last one was not really approved by council. Parts of it have been implemented. But certainly, I do see the, the increase in truck traffic. FedEx trucks are now very common as they deliver things to people in their homes and home businesses. So, there is a large increase in traffic. And I think we do need to come up, and we've been pushing this already. And I want to thank the, the council and, and for supporting an integrated regional transportation strategy, because I think it's vital that we do get into this as we transform from an urbanised culture to one that is perhaps a little more spread out than historically. We won't need the main highways taking people to work downtown Toronto, because there won't be that many people working there on a daily basis. But that just means that we're going to have more people out here. So, I think we do need to start thinking about that in, in terms of our transportation strategy. And I think, you know, this is probably a good chance to get started on it sooner than later.
Thank you, Councillor Soever. Next is Deputy Warden McQueen.
Well, thank you, Mr. Warden and County Council. And thanks to the presenters today for bringing forward your, your plan. And there's a couple of things I want to say, is I hope for your success with your, your grant moving forward. And I know why I stopped. And I know why I stopped have been working with you very closely on, on putting that application forward. Certainly, as, uh, Marissa, whoever has said, traffic has continued to increase and, you know, more, more importantly, everybody's getting stuff delivered to their homes. So it is, it is a little harder. But if you look at page 11 on your presentation, it talks about, uh, one of the items is sidewalks. And I know that is something that's, that is, uh, somewhat of a concern in, in Kimberley because of the, of the, of the large volume of traffic. And certainly where a lot of places you have to walk on the edge of the road because there's no place to walk. So something that maybe in, in the future, we need to look at in the sense of sidewalks. And, uh, also with regards to maybe calming of that traffic, I know, um, um, Pat has, has brought forward some, uh, ideas on calming through there that I know he's maybe he's going to be working through. And, uh, but I just wondered if, um, through County Council and, and Madam Clerk, if, if we do need, uh, if we're going to support the, or receive this delegation, if we should look for a report to come back from staff or an updated staff report with regards to the items that are happening, uh, from, uh, the Transportation Department with regards to calming. And, uh, from this presentation, are there maybe some other items that could be addressed through that staff report? So I know that, uh, certainly good communication. I know Kimberley area has been of concern of traffic for, for a number of years. Certainly through the, um, the elevation coming off the, or the slope of the road coming from the Negros Cartment is, is a tendency to, uh, keep people a little faster than maybe they should be going through that. And, but I know that there has been, and, and thanks to county for all the work they have done and on the calming with the lines and, and certain things that are there. And we do, uh, there are those flashing lights that, that do help a little bit there as well. So anyway, just, uh, maybe other discussion points are coming out of this morning, but I just wondered if maybe an updated staff report could come out of this delegation. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
You're on mute, Mr. Warden. And, but I do think that C A O Wind Growth, uh, may have some response to that, uh, question from, from Counselor McQueen.
Right ahead, Madam C A O.
Thanks very much. And, um, further to, uh, the, the points made, certainly county staff and the staff of Gray Highlands have been working collaboratively, um, with, uh, Ms. Rogers and Mr. Nelms and their committee with regard to, um, uh, a funding application to make some further changes in Kimberley. We're very supportive of that. I think there's an opportunity for, um, Gray Highlands staff and county staff to, um, work together. Some of the, the changes that the committee's, um, asking about are within the county's realm of responsibility and some of them belong to Gray Highlands. And I think it would be, um, maybe most effective if the staff report that, that came back was one that was, um, created jointly so that we were working as efficiently together as we could and collaboratively and that we knew that, um, you know, we had support of both the Gray Highlands Council as, as well as, um, looking for support from County Council on some of the things that are, are looked for there.
Well, I certainly would move that if appropriate, Mr. Warden, whenever that time comes.
I, I, I think it would be, uh, appropriate, Counselor McQueen. Certainly the delegates have asked for, uh, a motion. If I heard, uh, the delegation correctly, a motion requesting that staff work, uh, with their group. But perhaps it's better worded that, um, that this body, I'm, I'm thinking out loud here, Madam Clerk, uh, that this body, uh, work with, uh, Gray Highlands, um, uh, to, um, something about working with stakeholders to bring back or, uh, for consideration by council. I didn't work that very nicely, but you.
That's okay. I did have something, um, somewhat drafted, uh, that staff be directed to work with the Kimberley Safety Group and the municipality of Gray Highlands to review community safety considerations in the village of Kimberley and bring back a future report for consideration.
See, look at that. That's why we have you there, Madam Clerk. So moved by council, I, I am going to entertain that right now. And I recognize that there are other speakers, but I'll deal with the motion and perhaps during the course of the discussion on the motion, we can, um, have other speakers as well. So moved by Counselor McQueen, may I please have a second or Counselor Desai is seconding, um, the motion. Now discussion on the motion. Anybody want to speak to Counselor Desai?
Thank you, Warden. It's, um, I'm, I'm going to try and stay, keep my county hat on, but it will switch between the county and the municipal hat. And I do apologize for that. Um, the first thing I, I want to mention through, um, through one of the responses that, uh, Counselor, so ever received, the, the issue with directing or redirecting truck traffic is with County Road 2, for example, it goes, uh, goes through Fever Sham. Uh, County Road 12 goes right through Mark Dell. So every county road will have these populated settlements along the way. And so the answer isn't redirecting or banning truck traffic. And I, and I, uh, and I recognize that you mentioned that banning truck traffic is, is not the answer. Uh, I think the answer is more designing the road to accommodate, uh, all the users of that particular road. Uh, with that, my question is, how does the group envision county staff working with the group? And the reason I ask that is, uh, at, at, at the municipal level, uh, we, we had directed municipal staff to work with the group. And while I did second the motion to bring it to the floor, um, the reservation I have is of having two, two separate, uh, uh, staffs for, for the lack of a better word, working with the same group. Instead of having one group of staff liaising, um, between the group and the other, other, uh, uh, group of staff. For example, with, with, um, this particular project, uh, staff at Gray Highlands is quite heavily involved already. Um, perhaps instead of county staff working directly with the group, it could be a, a liaising, uh, effort on the part of Gray Highland staff uh, to, to involve county staff when and as needed. And if I could, so the, the question now becomes a two-part of, uh, to the, to the presenters, how do they envision great county staff working with their group? And then to, to the C A O on it, would it be better for Gray County staff to work directly with the group? Or would it be better for Gray County staff to work with, uh, Gray Highland staff, um, and, and sort of work with the group indirectly? Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Desai. I'll turn first perhaps to the delegates and then, uh, to the C A O.
Yes, Mr. Warden, uh, if I could respond to that, um, as everyone, I think, understands, there, there are, um, county and municipal responsibilities uh, that, uh, actually physically overlap in the village of Kimberley and around the area. So each has jurisdiction over some part of this proposal. Um, thus far, uh, we've been working with both the county and the municipality in what I would say is a very collaborative manner. I, I think it's an administrative decision, of course, how, how best to make that happen. But from our point of view, it's, it's working extremely well that we feel, um, we, yes, it's just working very well. So I'll maybe let Ms. Hargrove speak.
Madam C A O. You're muted.
All right. Thanks, Martha, for, for those kind words. And I do think that we are working well together. And there is, um, a significant amount of, of coordination and collaboration that's required um, to realize the, the vision that, um, the Kimberley group has, has put forward. So I was really wanting to just to see that continue, um, as long as we can, like, move forward together. Um, I think that will be the most efficient and, and effective way to, uh, understand what's possible there and what would require some changes or adjustments in order to, uh, be clear on what, on what we can do. But there's a lot of goodwill and a lot of interest right now. And you people have done a tremendous job in, in putting a vision together, um, that, that we can work towards. So thank you.
Counselor Desai, anything else?
Um, no. So what I've gathered from the C A O's response is that it, it is her opinion that it would be best for county staff to work directly rather than in a, in an indirect manner. Is, is that correct?
My understanding is that the direct work is already happening.
Right. Okay. No further questions. Uh, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Next is, uh, Counselor Potter.
Uh, thank you. And, uh, thanks to the delegation. Uh, I've been aware of this growing situation in Kimberley for a good many years now. Uh, and it is something that we need to pay attention to, but there's a lot of places like Kimberley dotted all over, uh, Gray County, uh, that are seeing increases in traffic. Uh, so if we, if we, I, I think Counselor Desai already mentioned, if we move the traffic off of Gray Road 13, and then it goes on to Gray Road 2. And so the people in Fever Sham and Colapore and Ravanna, uh, are, are going to be, uh, not very happy with us. We're seeing the same things in the Blue Mountains. We're seeing, uh, people wanting traffic diverted around Thornbury, for example. Uh, if you look at the, the, uh, geography of the area, it's very hard to find a place to divert traffic, uh, through that area. So we need to look at the bigger picture. And, uh, I know that sounds like political doublespeak, but in this case, it's very true. Um, you know, e- every time we make a move, we're taking the risk of putting a problem onto someone else's plate. And I don't think we want to do that. And I don't think our delegation would want to do that either. Uh, I think we need to look at, uh, why, I, why is so much traffic using these roads? I, my, my suggestion is that it's probably because people are getting off the highways because they're getting too busy. Because they haven't had the attention they need for a, a good many years and they, and they need to be, uh, modernized to handle modern traffic loads. But that's another issue that, as far as the immediate future in Kimberley, I do think that sidewalks and maybe even a cycling trail or a walking trail around the village, uh, would, would be a big help to at least get people off the roads, uh, in that area. Um, because I don't think we can just push all the traffic onto the neighboring roads.
Thank you, Counselor Potter. I don't see any other hands, um, Madam Clerk. So maybe it's time for us to call the question.
I do see, sorry, I do see Counselor McQueen, Mr. Warden.
Oh, yes, I, I see him now. My apologies, Deputy Warden.
No problem. I just stuck it in there just, uh, after the clerk sort of said there wasn't, sorry, apologies for that. Just briefly, I don't know if there's a comment from our Director of Transportation, but, uh, two things, I think, um, let me just to iterate on it that through our reconstruction of county roads, I think now our policy is to have paved shoulders, which does allow the ability to have other users on that roads more in a more safe manner. And the other thing is, can our Director of Transportation just explain a little bit more the, um, process? Like you have local roads and you have county roads and you have provincial highways. But there is a certain designation for county roads. And I just, I think that needs to be, if, if that's possible for our director, just to speak to that. Cause I know that it, it has a different designation than a lower tier road. And I just, and I think that's probably from a class. I, I don't know enough about it, but I think it's from a class. I don't know if, if that's able to be communicated just in a brief manner to you, Mr. Warden.
Yes, um, Mr. Hoy.
Sure, yeah, I could comment on that briefly. So, um, our, our roads are classified as, you know, county arterial, county collector, county local. That really has, has no impact on how many people decide to use it, for example, right? It's kind of, um, based on the function of the road. And that being said, also based on traffic alone, there's different classes of roads, like most of ours are class two to class five. Um, we, we have very few class twos, but, um, I just wanted to, to mention about the, the committee. Cause I, I did walk through, uh, some of the, uh, sites with, with David and Stacy yesterday from the committee. And I just want to thank them, uh, for their work. Like, we hear a lot from community groups. Um, typically it's, you know, they have an issue or they just have a problem or something they want. Um, but there's not many that have, uh, such a complete vision, um, as this group. Now, there is some challenges in their plan that we see, um, but there's also a lot of really quick, easy wins that I think we can continue to work with Gray Highlands on, um, as far as some of the pedestrians. Uh, we know with planning, um, the recreation area parking is an issue. Um, through the pandemic, we see it more than ever. There, there is all these beautiful recreation areas and really nowhere to park generally. And I, and I think I agree with, uh, a point David had made yesterday, just that the paved shoulders are nice and they're good for the cyclists and, um, but for pedestrians, the white line as a protection is, um, a little underwhelming, you know, makes you a little uncomfortable. If the only thing protecting you is a white line drawn on the pavement. I mean, it's, we're making our best effort, um, to take care of pedestrians in rural areas. Um, and then of course, our traffic calming, you know, we've started in Hanover. There's, uh, we've been collecting data on that. And, uh, we've already started some of the work on this project as far as our, uh, um, our speed dropdowns and that type of thing coming into Kimberley that you'll see in the report coming in July. So I wanted to thank that group for, for the work and the, and their very professional and, uh, well-laid out presentation, um, that we can, you know, really pick as many pieces as we can get going, um, in their plan and, and work together towards implementing it and making it a safer community for everybody.
Thank you, sir. Um, Deputy Warden, anything else? Excellent. Uh, then I think it's time for us to call the question. We've had some very good discussion. Uh, is there anyone opposed to the motion? I'm seeing none. That is indeed carried. I want to thank, uh, Ms. Rogers and Mr. Nelms for your delegation today. And by the way, Martha, I do agree, I, I take your point very well, that, uh, safety is indeed, uh, social determinant of health. So good point made. Nice that you couch it in that way. It was, it's clever and right, by the way. Okay, moving on to our second, uh, delegation from Gray Sawall Conservation Authority. Is there anyone introducing, Madam, uh, Clerk?
Uh, yes, the, the Chair of the Gray Sawall Conservation Authority, Scott Gregg, is here to introduce, uh, Mr. Lanthey from Gray Sawall and Jennifer Stevens from Sawgin Valley.
Thank you very much, folks, for attending. I apologize, we're a little bit, uh, late, but you now have the floor.
Well, good morning, Warden, and, uh, thank you to yourself, Warden Hicks, and to council and to staff for the opportunity to, uh, uh, to be listened to here this morning. My name is Scott Gregg. I am an own sound city councillor and currently the Chair of the Board of Directors for Gray Sawall Conservation Authority. And with me today is Tim Lanthey, our, uh, C A O and Jennifer Stevens, uh, General Manager of the Sawgin Valley Conservation Authority. Uh, Tim's been with us, uh, since approximately 2006 as in our planning department, uh, working there for many years. And then as our manager of conservation lands and has been our current C A O for approximately a year and a half now. And he has, uh, guided the Conservation Authority through challenges, obviously responding to, uh, COVID for most of his time as C A O and to challenges to changes to the Conservation Authorities Act, some that have been implemented and some that are forthcoming. And also as well, challenges to conservation properties, uh, from the overwhelming tourism and pedestrian stress that, uh, we've all been seeing, uh, as people escape, uh, the challenges to their daily lives these days. So with that, I'd like to introduce Tim to, uh, speak to the presentation before you today. Thanks.
Thanks, sir.
Great. Thank you very much, Scott. Uh, thank you, Warden. Thank you, council. Appreciate being here today. Uh, I know that, uh, we have a bit of a limited time, so I may not go over all the slides and I may go through it at a very high level and quickly so that we can get through the material because there is quite a bit. And I know that your planning department has also prepared, um, quite a comprehensive report on this. So what I'm here to talk to you about today is the regulatory proposal that the province has issued. They issued it in mid-May. And these are regulations that'll support the changes to the Conservation Authority Act changes.
I'm sorry, Tim, would you like us to share our screen or are you going to share your screen with the presentation?
I'll do that right now.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
I'll just verify, Madam Clerk, that everybody is seeing that slideshow screen now?
Yes, we can see that.
Excellent. Thank you. So the slide in front of you right now, just to give you a bit of a background on Gray Saw will really highlight, uh, the area in shaded in green in the map on the left-hand side of your screen is Gray Sawall's watershed jurisdiction. The darker green line that encompasses municipality of Northern Bruce Peninsula, as well as the Sawgin Valley Conservation jurisdiction area, is the total, uh, source water protection region area for Gray Sawall, Sawgin and North Bruce Peninsula. For Gray Sawall, that means we're made up of eight member municipalities and we have 11 elected. For Gray Sawall, that means we're made up of eight member municipalities, and we have eleven elected officials that act as our board of directors and guide the authority. On the right-hand side of the screen is a very high-level breakdown of Gray Sawall's budget. And this is a similar budget breakdown that other conservation authorities see as well. So for twenty twenty-one, we're showing about just shy of fifty percent of the budget is self-generated by Gray Sawall. About forty-four percent is raised through municipal levy. The small blue piece of the pie represents what's provided by the province through source water drinking, or drinking water source protection. And this is specifically to cover that program. That's about five percent of our overall budget. The very small gray piece of the pie, which is about one percent of our total budget, represents the provincial transfer payment that goes towards natural hazard programs and other conservation authority programs. The reason that I present this is that we're going to be talking to your municipalities about striking agreements, M O Us, to, um, to move forward with the, the work that conservation authorities do. And I think that you can see through our budget, it's very important to recognize that this is a partnership between our municipalities and our conservation authorities. We're the two big stakeholders in this, and we really need to work together to make sure that the changes that happen are best for both of us. So the regulatory proposal is essentially broken down into four main categories. These are defining what are mandatory and non-mandatory programs for conservation authorities, the transition plans and M O Us that we'll need to prepare for the province, and the timelines associated with those, uh, community advisory boards, which is a new item for conservation authorities, as well as section twenty-nine regulations. So, first question, what is mandatory? So the province has defined our mandatory programs for us through the changes to the legislation, and they further refine those through this regulatory proposal. So these are our programs and services around natural hazards. So this is our role in commenting on natural hazards, on Planning Act applications and similar type of acts, uh, aggregate resources, things of that nature. This is the permits that we issue for development and the review that we do to ensure that people and property are kept safe. This is the flood warning and monitoring that we do to ensure that when those flood situations arise, we can provide ample warning to our municipal partners and to our communities so that people know that this is coming or that the possibility of this is coming. All in all, the natural hazards programs is about helping our community to stay safe. Second item that they've identified is the management of conservation authority-owned lands. So this includes, um, they've really honed it down. The province has really honed this down to be mostly around natural heritage. They've added a concept of us doing an overall strategy for all of our properties, and so for Gray Sawall, that's about eighty property groupings of about two hundred properties in total and thirty thousand acres of land. Uh, they've, they're asking us that to do a management plan for each property or group of properties, and they're also asking us to do an acquisition and disposition strategy. So Gray Sawall has, uh, the strategy. We'll have to amend it for this. One of the items that's been excluded explicitly in the regulatory proposal, and this is a, a problem for conservation authorities that we are raising with the province, is that they've explicitly excluded recreational uses and educational uses from the management of these lands. So in, uh, Gray County, we work closely with, uh, the Gray County Tourism and the staff that you have at Gray County that, that, uh, that look over, that oversee tourism. And through those discussions, we know that, uh, outdoor recreation is the number one driver of tourism in Gray County, in Bruce County. It's a huge driver of tourism in Ontario in general. Gray Sawall's properties see over three hundred thousand people a year. These people are coming now, whether we want them to or not, and I think all of your municipalities can recognize that there's been a huge influx in people coming. We can't not invest in this recreational infrastructure, even just passive basic infrastructure like trails, parking areas and washrooms for this visitation. It's important to our communities, and we can't stop it even if we wanted to. So, uh, I would, uh, strongly recommend that, uh, through your comments to the province, that you mentioned the value and the importance of maintaining those recreational uses as mandatory. Drinking water source protection has been added as a mandatory program for conservation authorities. Uh, this was a provincial and municipal program, and conservation authorities, uh, carried out the work. The actual work being prescribed here is no different than the work we're doing now. But I do like to flag that the new legislation, uh, affords conservation authorities the ability to levy for source water drinking protection to our member municipalities and to specified municipalities. So those would be the municipalities for Gray Sawall that actually fall within Soggin Valley and North Bruce Peninsula. At this point, we have no intention to levy for those, but the province has set the stage for it. A couple of new items have been added as prescribed or mandatory programs, and this is a core watershed-based resource management strategy. We don't fully know what this is going to look like yet, but in the province's words, it's intended to provide an integrated planning process with a longer-term perspective. So the idea is that we look at all of our mandatory programs on a watershed basis and have a long-term strategy for what that looks like within the community. Finally, they've added water quality and quantity monitoring, and this is a program that we already carry out in partnership with the province. So that's mandatory. So by default, everything else that we do is non-mandatory. So that, uh, has been divided into two subcategories, and that's municipal service agreements. So examples of those would be planning agreements that we have with your member municipalities to provide planning comments on natural heritage, for instance, on stormwater management. And as I said, the natural hazard item is actually a mandatory program. Another example would be the risk management work that our source protection office does for many of your municipalities to ensure that, uh, drinking water stays safe. So everything else, our education program, our stewardship program, our forestry program, those types of things are other programs and services. So the point of this is that some things are going to be allowed to be levied for. The mandatory ones, by default, can continue to be levied uh, for, for some of the operating costs. Non-mandatory are going to require conservation authorities to develop M O Us with our municipal partners for any part of that program that requires municipal levy. So municipalities will be able to see the details of that budget and decide whether or not, uh, they choose to pay levy for that. Under our current structure, the board decides on our suite of programs, and the levy is distributed across that suite of programs. It's our goal at Gray Sawall that moving forward, we would come forward to our municipalities with the same suite of programs with the same levy cost and say, we can continue to provide the great value for service that we provide today to our community for the same dollar value. We just need some more uh, agreements and paperwork to ensure that it meets the new legislation. So, very generally speaking, the slide in front of you right now shows a general breakdown of Gray Sawall's program areas and where they would fall. And you can see, I'm hoping you can see my cursor here, but you can see a, a large suite of them is the, the natural hazard items or source water protection. They're very clearly in the mandatory program. Some of the items are very clearly in municipal service, some are very clearly other programs and services. But you'll see, there's a huge suite of programs that we offer that aren't so clearly defined, uh, because that's never the way we've looked at it before, as all of our programs have been considered important core programs to the authority. So this is going to be a lot of work to suss that out, and we're, we're going to have to have discussions with your municipal councils, with your senior staff, to see what that means. And the way we do that is through transition plans and M O Us. So the province is requiring that conservation authorities develop a transition plan by the end of this year. That will include defining which programs fall into which category, what costs are associated with those, and then consulting with each of your member municipalities to make sure that you agree with us. So that's the transition plan. Uh, we are concerned about the timeline being the end of this year, simply because the regulations for phase one, which we're talking about today, and phase two haven't been released yet. So we generally know where we're going, but we don't really know the target that we're aiming at, uh, and the year is moving fast. The M O Us will then be required to be signed by the end of next year, and the new budgets should start in, uh, twenty twenty-three with the new, the new levy breakdown. Again, we have some concerns with this, simply because, uh, all of us will be developing our budgets mid-year so that they're, they're ready for the end of the year, and as you know, we have a municipal election next year as well, which could infringe this. So the Conservation Authority, Gray Sawall anyway, is asking for a six-month extension from the province on both of these to allow us time to effectively consult, work together with your member municipalities, and strike meaningful agreements. One of the new items, and I'm not going to go through this in detail, but the province has, uh, prescribed, that we will do, are community advisory boards. So conservation authorities have always had the ability to have advisory boards, but this one will be mandatory. And I believe the goal of the province here is to provide a direct conduit for the general community to the board of directors. Um, we have no issue with this. Uh, we just want to make sure that the province recognizes that there may be a mandatory role of this as well, to ensure that costs are covered with the administration of such a board. So some of the concerns and issues I've already mentioned, but really, we're generally fine with what's being proposed. Uh, and you'll, you have a, you do have a report coming forward from your staff as well. Our primary concerns are the timelines. We think they're too restrictive, given that the province hasn't released the actual information that we need so far. Um, we have serious concerns about the recreational exclusion from lands management. Uh, that type of recreation is vitally important in Gray Bruce, and we're certainly seeing, uh, hundreds of thousands of people coming here every year for exactly this kind of recreational experience. And the final thing is several new items have been added to the legislation as, uh, mandatory or required for conservation authorities to do. We run pretty lean right now, and we have concerns that the added workload will, uh, put added strain on our current staff resources, so we have concerns about costs and capacity associated with that. Because if we have things that we have to do, and it's over and above what we currently do, uh, we may need more money in order to make those things happen. So the next steps, uh, Scott and, and Jennifer and I have been going to municipal councils, have been meeting with senior municipal staff to start this dialogue so that, uh, a couple of months from now, later in the year, when we have the information that we need, we can really start to effectively develop these timelines and, uh, transition plans. Uh, we're meeting with, with municipal councils, as I mentioned. The goal, we're still going to aim for that goal of the end of the year for the transition plan, the end of next year for the agreements, or more likely the middle of next year for those agreements. Um, but we are really pushing the province to extend those based on the current situation. Some of the additional items that the province has asked, that conservation authorities do, we're going to continue to seek clarification from the province on those to make sure that we can, uh, we can effectively provide what needs to be provided. So I'll just touch very briefly. So all of this is what the province is considering phase one. Phase two will include levy regulations, which will define what's included in that levy, and the, the province right now is also talking about including overhead costs in that levy, so that we're not trying to suss out, um, all of the details of, of every program, like, so my time split across everybody, H R and so on and so forth. So those might be able to be uh, bulk considered as operating costs. So, at a very high level, that is the regulatory proposal that sits before us right now. Um, and through you, Mr. Warden, I would welcome, uh, any discussion or comments or questions that council may have.
Well, thank you very much for that presentation, Tim. Uh, Jennifer, I believe you're with us as well. Is there anything you wanted to add?
Thank you, Warden Hicks. Um, I, I'll, I'll keep it very brief. I will keep it very brief. Um, I do, I do want to thank, uh, Tim for presenting on behalf of both, uh, both authorities today. We, uh, we jointly decided that it would be best for one presentation instead of two presentations and, uh, with the same content, and as opposed to going back and forth between two presenters, it would be much more efficient, and Tim did an excellent job. But suffice to say, the two conservation authorities are working very closely together to try and align much of the work that we're doing towards, uh, moving forward in establishing these agreements and, and the transition plans, and really the discussions that, uh, affect the two conservation authorities and shared municipalities. Um, we're going to work very closely together to ensure that the discussions don't need to happen twice, um, so that we can, we can be much more efficient. Um, and, and I really think that, uh, Tim and I have a good way forward. Um, so, uh, I think that we're, we're going in the right direction, but really, the, the crux of the matter is that, uh, that there, there's a moving timeline right now, and, and we don't know, we have so many unknowns insofar as that the, the regulations, uh, we have heard as recently, or I have heard as recently as yesterday, that from Conservation Ontario, that the province is looking at releasing the, the first phase of the regulations, uh, or the regulations that we're talking about today by the end of the summer. But that's still very, very ambitious to get all the work done within four months, um, in, in terms of the transition plans and recognizing that there might be changes in those regulations from what was proposed in, in the guide that has been presented in front of you and circulated with this agenda. So thank you very much. We'll questions.
Thank you, Jennifer. I will turn now to council. Are there any questions, uh, of the delegates? I do not see questions. I'm just going to say that you probably did a, an excellent, oh, councillor Gamble. Go right ahead.
Get on, get on muted here. Yeah, I sat on Soggin Conservation Authority for a number of years. And the one I, you could see this kind of incident starting years ago. It's, it's a provincial download. I know they, they're not going to say that, but that's what it is. Uh, it started with source water. Uh, they provided the, the provincial government provided the money for source water. We just had to administer. Well, we could tell at the time that it was going to get downloaded, and it has, along with a number of other items. So, you know, I, I have sympathy for the conservation authorities. I, I don't know how the provincial government figures, uh, and, and the, the conservation authority was designated at one time with the, the funding being highly provincial. I think it was at one stage seventy-five, twenty-five, and now it's completely the opposite. You know, the municipalities are the end result. It's going to have to pick this all up, and it's going to be tough. I, they have a big job. I, I have, they have my empathy. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gamble. Uh, deputy Warden McQueen.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Warden, and, and thanks for the presentation. Um, just looking through your slide program there, or presentation, you mentioned one thing, Tim, about the timing of, of, of preferring an extra six months. Uh, I don't know if you were able to email me that exact wording to myself or even Christine Robinson. I know I'm on an A M O executive meeting this afternoon, and I know both Christine and I have an A M O board meeting tomorrow, uh, that we could maybe raise those points that you're asking that maybe could be, you know, forwarded through from A M O to the, as we do have that M O U process that we have through A M O and provincial government. So, if, you know, if you're able to maybe, uh, text, uh, or email Christine and I a few points that you, specifically what you wish us to ask, maybe we could do that through our board meeting. And I know the one thing I, I see a bit of a concern is, is of the date of January first, twenty twenty-three, well, uh, I think there's a new council probably will be sworn in in December of twenty twenty-two, you know, and then you're supposed to have all that stuff in place, and then you got a new council, and, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of dates there that can, uh, that could cause a, a few wrinkles as well. So, anyway, if, if you want to send something back to Christine and I, and maybe we can address it both myself at the A M O board and, and us actually at the, or my executive meeting this afternoon and A M O board tomorrow, we can maybe try to help with those few points. Thank you.
Thank you, deputy Warden. Councillor Robinson, you're next.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Warden, and, uh, Tim and Jennifer really appreciate the, uh, the presentation. Certainly, as a member of S V C A board, uh, we're kept up to date, and, uh, it's just something that I feel member municipalities and counties need, uh, this information as well. Uh, so well done on, on the presentation. I'm wondering, uh, Tim or Jennifer, are you able to discuss a little more, uh, just briefly about the the proposal for the advisory committee, uh, composition mandate? Uh, do you feel through the, um, the enhancement of governance as what is being proposed? Uh, is there any overlap between a board of directors, uh, the, uh, particular subcommittees and what is proposed as this advisory committee? Thank you.
Tim?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Warden. Uh, yeah, the simple answer is there, there's a, there's a high potential for overlap here. Um, i- it's very new to us to consider this. So right off the bat, the board of directors, as I mentioned, is made up of elected municipal officials. So many of you sit on a conservation authority board of directors. You're already representing the public interest in this. Um, and, and several conservation authorities have other advisory groups, like an agricultural advisory group or others. So I think there's enough flexibility in the proposal coming forward from the province, and they're suggesting that they're going to maintain enough flexibility so that conservation authorities can find a group that, that fits a niche that they need. Uh, and certain conservation authorities are already looking into, if we already have such a group, like an egg committee, could it double as the community advisory board? So those are some of the questions that are could it double as the community advisory board? So those are some of the questions that are going back to the province in terms of figuring out how we can best do this to get that conduit to the board from the public without duplicating effort and without costing too much staff resources and time.
Jennifer?
Thank you, Warden Hicks. Just a continuation of that. I I would agree with everything Tim has has conveyed. But in addition to that, the specifications in 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 terms of the what was proposed in in this environmental registry posting is such that the community advisory group must also take into consideration indigenous peoples as well as youth. And not a lot of conservation authorities have representation from both of those groupings. So there will be need to be some rehashing internally to ensure that if those two groups need to be continued to be represented based on on what comes out in the regulations, there will need to be some, I guess, reorganization internally, which, once again, if the province allows for that flexibility, hopefully, there will be a minimal amount of effort on behalf of the conservation authority. But what is important to recognize as well is that Conservation Ontario, which is the body that governs or rather represents the thirty six conservation authorities in the province, has created a governance accountability and and transparency group to help with all of these new Conservation Authority Act provisions as well as the regulations. And and most recently, we had a meeting yesterday and we discussed the the need for inclusion of perhaps additional provisions in our administrative bylaws, which we all have, all thirty six conservation authorities, to incorporate the community advisory groups. So we're already thinking about that and that will be coming forward in in September to Conservation Ontario Council. So know that the support network is in place to assist the conservation authorities with with that that type of backend work that needs to be done to to ensure that we're we don't have to do all thirty six of us do the same work. It's it's actually being done by a small group of us that will then share that information across the province. So that hopefully we will have that support network with, in addition to what is being done locally based on the flexibility that's been built into, hopefully, what has been heard from from the conservation authorities and the municipalities.
Thank you, Jennifer. Councillor Robinson?
Thank you, and thank you, Tim and Jennifer, for for that detailed information. And also for your outreach to county council for this presentation. I just want want to reiterate what Deputy Warden McQueen has has requested. If there's information that you could both provide to Deputy Warden McQueen and myself that we can forward on to AML as we're both representatives, that would be our pleasure. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, councillor Robinson. Madam Clerk, I don't see any other hands. So with that said, I will thank our delegates, councillor Greg, Tim and Jennifer for this delegation. Good discussion. Thank you for coming out.
Thank you very much.
For the opportunity.
Lots of work ahead of you. All right, council, we've been sitting for over an hour. We do have a third delegation. I suspect that that one's going to take a little bit of time. So with the leave of Trent, if you wouldn't mind, we would like to take a break. Is Trent with us?
That's great, Warden Hicks. Absolutely. No problem.
Okay, so why don't we come back at five minutes to the hour, so a ten minute break? So we'll come back here at ten fifty five. Everyone just stop their video and mute and we'll see you back at ten fifty five sharp.
entertain questions after that. So our first slide here just speaks a bit about the overview of our presentation. The first we'll talk about the project team, so the incredible group of organizations that helped us come up with the conclusions of the study and we'll look at kind of the the process of arriving to the recommendations that are before you and speak to the about the recommendations. We'll also talk about something we were asked to look at and as far as solvency or or what happens if the airport was closed, what would be the impact of that? And then look at a reviewing of the different options that are available to move forward. And then we're again happy to take any questions for anybody. So just a bit about the team. So first off, our own company that we have airport planners and management group and and various disciplines in-house to help us with formulating the project. So we had a great team that worked within Lumex. We also work with an organization called Kevin de Grey Community Planning Consulting, who helped us with the planning parts of the study and also looking at maximizing the land use or the lands on the airport and what that could look like. Acorn Thirty, who does a lot of work with both the aviation industrial and municipal organizations to look at how to vision on how that you could market the concept that's before you. And then with Molly Collin Designs, who helped us really with some of the layouts and site plans moving forward. The other part I wanted to mention was we had a incredible team to work with between Gray County staff and Georgian Bluff's staff, who were are great contributors, especially with historical information and kind of vetting the concepts by to kind of validate what merit might be available or possible and whatnot. So a big thank you goes out to them for all their contributions as well. Kind of our goal is just to remind everybody is really to look at assess the airport's viability as a regional asset. So what role can this, what role does this airport play and what role can it play? And looking at it from a regional aspect when it comes to bringing sustainability and increasing jobs in the region. We also looked at providing recommendations for investment and business persuasions and also provide a sound decision making and planning process. So we're recommending some steps that you may consider to to move forward. The first thing we did, of course, is look at the current status of the airport. So we looked at the financials, the the operations, past and present, and the infrastructure and of the of the airport and the potential for that infrastructure moving forward. Our next step was to look at previous studies and reports and not unlike many airports across Canada, studies and reports, there was a number of them to review, so we went through them. We looked at some industry best practice. So what are some things that have been working, both in Graham Bruce County, but also in North America, that could help with this incredible asset? So we looked at those best practices. Next thing we looked at too is trends and case studies. So again, some other organizations that have gone down the same road as what we're proposing or the current status quo and reviewed those. We had many stakeholder consultations. These are always interesting to our team to really try and get in the minds of the decision-makers and both from the, from all levels of government and the private sector. So speaking with the MP and the MPP with a number of CIOs and councils, councils of municipalities and also indigenous communities and the Métis and nations of Ontario. Also spent some time on economic development, so looking at it from the ECTV folks that you have in your organizations, which again were some incredible conversations about potential for a regional airport, as well as the, some of the private sectors such as tourism and how the airport, not just this airport, but other airports could play into an important tourism pillar, if you will. Also looked at aviation, non-aviation businesses to see how can this prosperity hub we're proposing, how can that supply chain work together to be successful? We talked to Bruce Power executives as well, just on, just what's happening with Bruce Power relating to the aviation aerospace in the region? And how might a regional concept, so for things like cargo and that sort of thing? And also from an industrial, commercial land use, is there supply chain avail, options to help with Bruce Power? We also talked and looked at other review of airports in the region. And I'm going to tell you, I'm a big proponent of airports in communities. They're an economic driver, no matter how big or small. And we had some incredible conversations. And when we look at it, that there's a role for each of the airports, it's just defining what that role is and how the regional model, taking into consideration these other airports that provide, in many cases, the general aviation community in their community. So lots of discussions around that. We also looked at the current and future potential economic assessment and impact on region, which we'll share with you today. We worked on some community surveys. We had a very short window to try and pull those surveys together, but definitely speaking with politicians who represent constituents, that we had some good feedback on that as well. Opportunities and potential as a regional airport. So really looking at what is those opportunities that I spoke about in airport governance and ownership. So what could it look like? What are the model options to look at moving forward? So that's a bit about kind of our assessment and research, which again, you see in the study, was very extensive. So some of our recommendations, so what surfaced from the review? So these are some items that led us to the recommendations, if you will. We know that we've heard from both councils, Georgian Bluffs Council and the community that if in fact this is going to be a regional model, that, you know, status quo isn't an option. We know that airports struggle again across Canada. So we need to take those opportunities as a region and look at how to turn that upside down. Infrastructure upgrades that are required. So looking at the fact that there is a need for some upgrades. However, what is the funding opportunities and resources available for that? Airport and lands are underutilized and lack appropriate level of marketing and sales. Again, not uncommon in municipalities that have limited resources and limited experience when marketing to the, you know, potentially world market on attracting aviation aerospace businesses. So we kind of flag that as for any airport to be successful, you need that, a level of expertise on that. The validity of opportunities presented, we feel are solid based on some of our recommendations moving forward. And we also feel that, as I mentioned a minute ago, the dedicated experience aviation aerospace resources are required to make the regional model work. So it needs to be well thought out. So our recommendations moving forward was first off, that the airport is an asset to the region and should be, remain open and should be deemed possibly the business airport of the region. So focus on attracting that industry and opportunities in aviation aerospace that can make use of the long, the longest, the certified airport with the longest, strongest and widest runway. It's also, there's opportunity for general aviation. And that's both from a traditional private aircraft that are transient or that again have hangars and are, that's their home base. And also the charter services that could operate out of there as well. Medevac, education and charter flight services, and I'll get into those. Number two is the airport lands be deemed employment lands to develop the Gray Bruce Prosperity Hub, which incorporates the phased development in areas and the focuses, as I mentioned earlier, around aviation aerospace, aviation education, aviation commercial industrial development, non-aviation commercial industrial development and tourism. So creating a hub where these industries or supply chains that feed off each other to attract like-minded businesses to the area. And number three was a working group is formed immediately with the township of Georgian Bluffs and Gray County to champion the prosperity hub to solve things like ownership structure and development. So there's, there's no need to start, to delay starting, get moving and create this hub and generate the jobs. Number four, so we're recommending when we look at all the models of how governance could work, how you bring several municipalities into one venture. And I know you've been probably experienced this many times, but to develop a municipal services corporation. So it's formed to govern, to govern and operate the prosperity hub and comprised of Gray County or Gray and Bruce Counties or Gray and Bruce Counties and the township of Georgian Bluffs. So whatever the governance model that you may wish to come up with. Number five, that's very important, regardless of how you choose to move forward. We feel passionate that this is something that should be developed now, and that's develop an airport network. And there's several reasons for that, to raise awareness and promote the region's airports. Again, they are economic drivers for each of your municipalities. And look at things like joint marketing, especially to the general aviation tourist part, but also just to, as well to make awareness to businesses and users that may possibly benefit from, from the airports. Looking at the buying power, the cost savings and sharing of specialty equipment such as, I apologize, such as equipment like crack sealing or paint marking equipment as a small example. And number six was to secure a dedicated business development resource with a background in aviation aerospace to stimulate and expand the Gray Bruce Prosperity Hub and aerospace components. So again, leading back to finding the right individual organization that can actually take this and has the contacts and can hit the ground running on really trying to get this development off the ground. Number seven was to create a business plan to support the prosperity hub. So develop and to help support securing funding for various levels of government in the private sector. So taking the, the concept and turning it into reality with a solid plan to, to move it forward. So just with some short-term action items that we feel that could be worked on now. And that first one would be to look at the removing the NEC, working in conjunction with NEC to remove NEC development controls from airport lands. So that's something that it's a bit of a process and that could be started now. Next item was aviation aerospace, so generate a marketing strategy to attract general aviation tenants. So again, low-hanging fruit, just create an aggressive program. Seek private-public partnerships for T-hanger investment and development. There's currently no empty hangars at the airport. So create that T-hanger concept in order to meet potential demands. Issue an RFP to attract small regional carriers. So this was a big topic as we conducted consultations again between council and, and members of the business and private individuals that we spoke to. And one of the things we heard loud and clear from the business sector is yes, there was a service tried before, but the timing, the time of day and when it ran didn't meet the needs of the business community. So, you know, put out an RFP to figure out what is the right carrier that could help with, with the region. We didn't suggest in here that Air Canada or WestJet would come to your doorstep for, for that service, but is there a small carrier service that could, that could help with that? Adopt operational and governance models for the airport. So, you know, look at what is the best governance model to move the airport forward into the future that meets the, the needs. Develop the Gray Bruce Airport Network Initiative. So again, something that doesn't have to be delayed if, if you feel that there's merit in it, it could get moving right away. And develop a strategy to and implement fixed-based operations services. So to have a successful regional airport, you need a fixed-based operation. And they look after fueling, de-icing, car rentals, catering, all those services that are needed for when you're servicing jet traffic, for instance, coming in and out of the area. We did hear loud and clear that there's jets that just won't come in in the winter because they don't have de-icing capabilities at the airport or even a hangar to put the aircraft in. So something to start working on. From aviation, aviation education, develop a strategy to attract a flight school and related services such as sightseeing tours and charter services. So again, flight schools, there's a variance of the different flight schools you can attract, but look at one that is dealing with potential pilot shortages and look at companies that can offer those other services so that they're successful and can complement the potential for the area. And aviation commercial industrial was execute the business development strategy, so get working on that. Establish and maintain ongoing connections with the business community such as Bruce Power, Nuclear Innovation Institute, Organization of Nuclear Industries and the nuclear supply chain, and also the rest of business within the community, both tourism, commercial and industrial. Implement the marketing strategy to attract the right businesses to the hub. And create and implement a strategy to attract commercial air operators. So again, tying back to, you know, not necessarily the, the major carriers, but as far as passenger service, but what services can be offered out of the airport, such as MROs, some maintenance, repair and overhaul facilities to, to assist with those, those services. Another big area is for commercial industrials, seek funding opportunities to develop shovel-ready lots. So we hear definitely in the aviation world that when somebody wants to build, they are looking to build fairly soon. So making sure that there's some, some shovel-ready lots serviced ahead of time to meet that need. And again, look for the public-private partnerships for this development. Is there a private developer out there that would, would entertain taking on this part of the project in order to get moving and get some funding to support it? Again, implement a marketing strategy for this area and review the current agricultural lease agreements and seek new ones. So agriculture is constantly changing. So what are the opportunities on some of the lands that the airport can't build on, but could use them for ag use? Definitely with tourism, so initiate conversation with Parks Canada. We've heard loud and clear about the congestion on the highway leading to the park. So the ideas that came up through consultations is looking at how the airport could play a role in alleviating some of that congestion. Also work with the tourism operators, so what kind of attraction packages could be realized through the airport? And assisting with tourism. Funding opportunities, so complete the business plan for the hub, meet with the different levels of government, was very favorable in our conversations. And continue to review and monitor potential funding opportunities and seek opportunities for those private partnerships with funding. Now, we looked at the role of Sault Ste. Airport Network. And I know it's been talked about in this venue before, but, you know, one of the past criteria used with SOAN is to look at the regional airports that surround the GTA and how they can assist with congestion of the GTA airport. And we already saw that business, some business has been pushed out of Pearson. And although their numbers movements are low right now, it will bounce back. So what is the role that Wyartown could benefit from, from being a member of SOAN? And we see the collaboration, definitely there's more exposure to potential international companies. In other member airports have seen an uptake in the business inquiries and relocation of aviation and aerospace businesses to airports in the network. And, and building on what's happened with COVID with many people trying to get out of Toronto, is this the time to strike to look at companies that may wish to relocate? Our, from our planning group, some of their observations, definitely the 815 acres of prime land makes it a perfect strategy to develop of employment lands and how it could benefit the region. Employment lands create, present opportunity and create the prosperity hub. So all the, the foundation, if you will, is in place really to, to take off with this opportunity. So prospective master development plan is supportive of all the planning-related economic development policies was another observation. As far as the NAGR and SCAR Plan, as mentioned, currently not all lands fall under the NEP. And some of the lands that fallen under the NEP can be used for aviation use. And the NEP could be amended and removed based on a proposal to use the area. So again, as mentioned, this is something that should be looked at moving forward. Just quickly, this process explains how, what the process could look like to work towards that. So it starts with really meeting with NEC to explain the business hub concept, develop proposals and moving it right through the process to stage six, where hopefully that can be removed and you are passing bylaws and amending the official plan. This, this slide really looks at what that concept could look like, where each fleck, if you will, so each part of the, the marketing concept we put up with forms the prosperity hub. So you can see down the right side, just all the different comms of everything from the airport forming one of many opportunities for the lands. So there'd be the airport infrastructure itself, the aerospace commons, the learning commons, adventure commons and the business commons. This just shows you kind of a slide of the site plan of the airport, as well as the legend showing where we envision, based on again consultation and land use planning and best use of land, what it could look like. I'd just like to take a minute and just show you just a video quick of how that concept could come together. I'd just like to take a minute and just show you just a video quick of how that concept could come together. Thank you. This just gives you an idea of some of the marketing concepts that could be used, both on airport and taking that hub concept to turn into reality. So this is just a few suggestions. Just going to share order my colleague Sherry just to run through. We have a few slides left to look at the financial part of the hub concept. Sherry?
Thank you, Trent. So we took a look at the impact of developing, I hear a little bit of an echo, sorry. We took a look at the impact of the potential development of the hub. And so there's three components that make that viable. One is the direct input. And that has to do with workers that are located right on the actual airport itself and working in and amongst the building. The second part to economic GDP is the indirect. And that would be items that would be spin-off type businesses. So for example, perhaps maybe that business requires legal representation and that would be a spin-off of that. So that would be considered like you're indirect. The next is induced. And so that is the employees are spending out in the community in order to buy meals, in order to go out for entertainment and tourism. So those are the three types. So the current economic impact of the Wireton Airport, when we're looking at it is 2.6 million. So the direct impact is 1.6 million currently. The indirect to the community is 522,000 and the induced is 327,000. Six, please. Thank you. So when we actually take a look at what could happen during the build of both the prosperity hub and then also taking a look at what that could look like in the future. When we're looking at a build of about 10,000 square meters per building, it requires about 30 employees. So based on the average income, you're basically looking at a simple multiplier of the induced direct and indirect compilation. You're looking at about 1.7 million that that building alone would bring. So that's counting one, one building itself. For each of that building, if there's 10 employees, that also adds another 570,000 into the mix of GDP created from the airport directly. When we look at the hub and it's developed fully in full, the overall impact that that could have is an estimated job creation of 963 jobs. When we've talked about this proposal, we've looked at the employment lands and calling it employment lands. And that's pretty much when you, when you look at adding an extra 963 employees and their families, that direct impact and not considering the indirect is $44.5 million that that would have to the community itself. When we take a look at the actual prosperity hub itself and looking at the numbers, they do produce quite a, quite a set amount. And you can start to see that in years nine and 10 is when you're starting to see that funding come back. All of these costs have not considered any funds that would be available from any level of government. So we know as we've listed in the study itself is all the various grants that would be available, plus also putting together an actual business case and presenting it to the different levels of government. Because this would be considered employable lands. You have such a great asset there with 815 acres that can be developed and, and become a real prosperity hub. And there's something to be said about like-minded companies working together and collaboratively in the area. So for example, nuclear and aerospace would have very similar type of companies that would be looking to maybe merge that together and come to the Wireton Airport because they get the big bang for their buck of being able to build there, but also having that great tourism and, and the local economy available to them. Then we take a look at the property tax revenue. So based on the different phases that would occur throughout the various years and looking at the builds, we have calculated out that that would at the end of year 10 be producing nine point, in the grand scheme of things, 9.6 million dollars into the property tax revenue over the period of 10 years. So quite a significant amount that could be brought forward. And again, this is just a breakdown how each one contributes. So as indicated, we would be looking at phasing in the approach. So it's not going to be a very fast build. It's a very reserved type of build of attracting and building that momentum of bringing in business to the area. So in year one, as mentioned, we would be looking at potentially incorporating in order to form that committee that would run the airport and all of the lands in order to attract investment to the area with a very specialized skillset. And that's where the CEO would come in and they would be the person responsible overseeing the entire development lands, but also communicating with the community on what is transpiring there. And then also adding a marketing resource. As we know, marketing dollars would be required in order to actually develop a plan in place in order to attract that revenue. We know that in year two to year three, year two mainly is that the runway rehabilitation would need to take place. So that is something significant that would need to occur in order for traffic, air, air traffic to be able to be safe arriving at the airport. And then we looked at in the private area, having a very modest build of private hangars. We know that people are requiring the private hangars, they're looking for the private hangars. And so this is a very, very modest approach. It's not to say that you can't develop more. There's plenty of land to be able to do that. But in the financials, we looked at a very modest approach of only building five within the first five years. Again, you can develop that much faster. The commercial and industrial development, looking at year two, once that previous land lease is up, taking a look at attracting potentially somebody who would develop the lands a little bit more with perhaps maybe some more agricultural. Trying to think of the word, I've just misplaced my word. Where they develop the, the production of the food. Because as we know, there's a lot of funding going into food development right now due to food source concerns of the Canadian government. So that could be an area that we could see potential. The aviation, commercial, industrial land and also the tourism. So in year three, we're taking a look at developing the lands, having a flight school come in. Again, looking at that RFP and having that produced out as well as maybe looking at some of the opportunities that there are for companies to come from the Toronto area or other areas that want to relocate outside of a major city and come together with like-minded people. And again, having a hotel that's not in competition with anyone because it is at the airport servicing the needs of the airport and the tourism that's located closely to there. When we take a look at the solvency, so there is a lot of costs that are unable to quantify. However, when we did take a look, the, the direct impact of closing down the airport is not financially really feasible because of the values that you're looking at in order to, to purchase out the leases. And then also looking at the environmental, which is the major portion of being able to close the airport and what that would mean.
I'll take the next part, just some of the things we looked at for additional costs. Something for Georgia Bluffs to consider is the staff displacement and what happens with them. The non-emergency medevac flights must land at an airport or a heliport, which again is quite possible with other airports in the area. Some critical communication equipment for the Coast Guard. The NAV Canada office holds communication equipment and a weather observation system. The NAV Canada is going to invest, I think it's around a million dollars for a new AWAS shortly for the airport as well. So just quickly to wrap up, the really there's a few options to entertain the first office status quo. So keep it, the Georgia Bluffs Council may decide to keep it as it is. And the deficit currently at the airport is around 350,000. There is a solvency or the closure of the airport that is an option, which means that there's the cost to close the airport. But more importantly as well, there's the GDP that's lost in the region for that. And also some of the other things to consider like the being a certified airport. And there's many, many pros to that. And so to get that back, the airport would have to come up to a new standard, TP312 fifth edition. So that needs to be considered. The third option, which really is, you know, looking at working with Gray County Economic Development, companies like Think Canada and also looking at potential investors to really look at that, at those options. So, you know, in summary, going forward with prosperity hub over the years. And again, not, it's not going to happen overnight to realize the 44 million from job creation. But you have to start somewhere. So start on the base of creating that economic hub and prosperity hub for the region. This quickly is just some steps that could happen. So if you want to move forward, it's really take the next three months and look at, you know, the merit in moving it forward and what the governance and ownership models could look like. So that Gray County and the respective municipalities will benefit from it. Put together that working group and proceed with creating that business plan and governance structure into the new year on ensuring its success. And Warden Hicks, through you, that's our presentation. Thank you.
Okay. So thank you very much, Trent and Sherry. Counsel, I turn to you now if there are questions of our delegates. Counsel Potter.
Thank you, Warden. I wondered, did Lumex take a look at a more regional approach to this? You know, we have, for example, the Owen Sound Airport. And I just wonder whether we're focusing in on one airport instead of the, the whole picture. For example, this airport at Wireton, although it's a very good airport, I've flown into there. But for residents on this side of Gray County, it's almost as far away as Pearson, believe it or not. We have several other airports, including Barrier, that are actually closer. And certainly the Owen Sound Airport is much more accessible for people in this part of the county. So I just wonder if we're, if we're going to look at this as a county operation or make such a sizable contribution on the part of Gray County and the taxpayers of Gray County, that's whose money we're spending. Then maybe we should be looking at this more on a county-wide approach. And I just wondered how far we went in, in, in that or whether we should add that and widen this study?
Thank you, Counsel Potter. Trent, Sherry, or perhaps Steve?
Steve.
Yeah, Steve?
Thank you, Warden. I think the Lumex did look at, look at the regional airports and the roles they play. And I think the recommendation in the report is to, is to cooperate and, and that. And whether we get more involved directly is a good question in terms of leading that leadership and the, and the roles of joint marketing and efforts. I think the, the opportunity with the 400 acres in, in the Wireton International Airport is unique there. And in terms of identifying it as business, a business airport. It's not to say that the others have their roles to play as, as Trent explained. But I think there is a merit in, into taking a more focused look at that. I don't know if Trent wants to add anything to that.
Yeah, thanks, Steve. I would just echo your comments. And, you know, one of the things we did see is the roles that different, different airports play. The advantage of Wireton, it's not just the length and strength of the runway, but it's the navigational aids. And it's the, having the land and the ability to create that business hub that Steve's talking about. So, you know, I just, it's not taken away from any of the important roles that the other general aviation airports can play. But one thing we did listen to and hear and believe in is that the airports do need to start to work together.
If I could have another question, Warden. Thank you. When you say regional airport, are you including Collingwood? And are you also including the, the Sogeen Airport? Although I know they aren't in Gray County. If we're talking about a regional approach, in our minds, regional includes those other areas on the other side of county lines. So Collingwood, for example, is a registered airport and does have, have the ability to receive international flights. So, you know, and in the, in the report, it, it says that there are no other airports within the region that can do that, but Collingwood certainly can. And in our view, it was, it is within the region. So I just wondered what, whether that was considered and whether the Sogeen Airport was also considered.
Trent?
Warden Hicks through you. When we speak of the region, we're referring to Graham Bruce County only.
Okay, thank you. And that's why I, I think that this study needs to be given more time. I would not be in favor of approving it as is because I think that there's a long way to go in terms of the information that needs to be brought into it. I have a lot more questions, but I'll, I'll let some of the others get theirs in first. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Potter. Next is Counselor Millen.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thank you, Trent, for that presentation. It was, the video particularly was a master of marketing, I'm sure. My question is, I didn't hear a lot on terms of volume of passengers or flights. Lots on the ancillary businesses, you know, connected to aviation, but not a lot on flights themselves. So I, I'm curious to know, you know, what's the potential for number of flights or number of people coming in and out of the airport, you know, given the length of your, your study?
Trent?
Warden Hicks through you. Thank you for the question. The, the flight numbers will again depend on the type of businesses that you'll attract. So if you take a, if you look at a large flight school, for instance, that maybe they're training international, sorry, international pilots, they could do anywhere from 15 to 25,000 movements a year alone as a flight school. And when they, when they establish themselves there, they're buying fuel, they're living in the community, it's all those benefits that go with it. But as far as the number of flights that will, you know, will depend on the types of businesses that, that you attract there.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Counselor Soever, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And just following up on, on, and I'm a big proponent of regional airports. But one of the things that is important to regional airports is location, location, location. And one of the things that I noticed the study doesn't do is talk about how many people actually live within a certain distance of that airport. Certainly, this looks like a very robust plan and, and I can see how it would spur economic development. But, you know, I'm glad you clarified the, the definition of region here. It's Gray and Bruce Counties. But I don't see where Bruce County is in this. I mean, the two beneficiaries of this airport are going to be South Bruce Peninsula, Georgian Bluffs, and through them, the County of Bruce and the County of Gray. Now, South Bruce Peninsula sold this airport, their share of it in twenty fifteen to Georgian Bluffs. Georgian Bluffs obviously thought this was a good business opportunity and has now had six years ample time to implement a plan such as being, is being proposed today. They have not done this, and maybe that's a failure of municipal government. But certainly, you know, the opportunity is the same today as it was back then. And I can see the benefit to Georgian Bluffs. I can see the benefit to South Bruce Peninsula, Bruce County and Gray County. But from a regional approach, that airport is one hour and seven minutes from where I'm sitting today. I have Collingwood Airport thirty one minutes away. I have Owen Sound Airport twenty seven minutes away. Eden Vale, which is another strip which could be developed, forty four minutes away. And even the Berry Executive Airport and the Lake Simcoe Regional Airport are one hour and two minutes away and one hour and eighteen minutes away. So if we're talking regional development, I'd be all in support of a regional airport. But if Gray County is going to be a major funding partner, it should be serving all parts of Gray County. Like, I figure Owen Sound would really benefit from, you know, the, an airport right near Owen Sound. I mean, this is still some distance from Owen Sound and, you know, and certainly an airport south of Owen Sound in the Chatsworth area would be very beneficial to the county as a whole. Whereas this, half of this benefit is accruing to Bruce County. And if we're going to invest our county's funds where they're not interested. And, you know, obviously, South Bruce Peninsula isn't, and I don't see Bruce County stepping up even for this feasibility study. If we're going to be funding economic development in neighboring.
I, I'm going to interrupt you. I, I see our clerk waving her hand, so I'm just going to give her a chance to add some input here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. And I, I'm not specifically speaking to anyone, but I just want to remind Counsel that we are just asking questions related to the delegation. We are going to get into the report later on in the agenda, so these are just questions related to what was presented through the delegation.
Okay, well, the question is, when we talked about, there was a, a piece at the end on economic development, number of employees. When you did the economic development analysis, was that restricted to the economic benefit in Gray County? Or obviously, Wyerton is the closest community, most of the economic benefit would be there. So when, when the analysis was done on economic deba- benefit, was it restricted to that in Gray County?
So Sherry, that's perhaps a question to you.
Thank you, Warden, through you. So when we take a look at economic development, it, it goes to the counties themselves. So somebody can live, work and play forty five minutes from the airport. And so where they live within that vicinity would be dependent on, upon where they're doing their grocery shopping, where they're visiting for their foods or tourism that they may go visit. So the community as a whole. The other part to that is, is that we were looking at the actual governance structure and who would participate within that. And that is something that, from the study standpoint, we can only make recommendations and offer the suggestions. And then that would carry on to yourselves to make further decisions that way.
Thank you, Sherry. Counselor Soever, you're.
Okay, so if we're talking forty five minutes away, that excludes where I'm sitting and the other parts of eastern Gray County, like South Gate, Gray Highlands and Blue Mountains.
Okay, Counselor Robinson, you are next.
Thank you, Warden Hicks, and thank you very much for the detailed presentation and the most most intriguing opportunity for Gray County. Two questions. Clarification on slide number six. I wonder if there could be just a brief clarification or discussion on the infrastructure and the upgrades. What is it that is absolutely necessary to get moving along? I see the upgrades with regard to the I'm just wondering, rather than start commenting, could you just provide those updates? And also on slide eight, where it talks about, on number five, awareness and just putting a, an airport network together. Certainly, Soggy Municipal Airport, which I raised at the last time that you did the presentation, is, is an airport that's owned by three municipalities, two of which are Gray County municipalities, West Gray and Hanover, and one Brockton in Bruce County. And wondering if there's an opportunity, as I asked the last time, whether there could be more of a linkage to that, or at least explore those opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you, through you, Warden Hicks. I can answer the first question. Maybe I'll ask Steve to jump in on the second. The first question, the, the, the bulk of the infrastructure requirement is to replace the runway. There'll be some infrastructure projects to bring water sewer to, that needs to come to the airport as you start down the development road with the, and the industrial side of the airport, if you will. But also, there's a design concept that would be that, that infrastructure may be recovered over time through, through tenants. So that's the first part. And Steve, maybe I'll get to jump in with regards to the second part.
Certainly, when we look at the regional airports, I think a lot of what you can do is a lot of joint marketing. And that, that doesn't, we do that all the time with our neighboring municipalities, whether it's Bruce or Simcoe. And, and, and you can develop those relationships. I think what's also important, though, is that you got to have a plan for each airport and their role, and that's important. You know, I had an inquiry not that long ago that wanted to put residential developments at our airports. And I, and I asked our planners about, you know, Owen Sound and Sogeen and others. And it's, you know, if it's outside the settlement area, that's a challenge. But getting that role and having that information and knowing where, what, what you're going to do is important for each of those airports, but to work together. And certainly in terms of the marketing and equipment sharing, that, that's, that doesn't necessarily mean it has to be complicated. That's understanding that you're together, working together to, to, to achieve common goals. And, and together you grow the pie. So I don't know if that answered your question, but that's how I see it.
Mr. Warden, thank you very much. As long as there's some connection between the other, the airports, I, I think it's, it's a great step forward. And again, most intriguing opportunity here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Robinson. Next is Counselor Potter.
Thank you. And I'll, I'll make this my last follow up. I don't, I don't want to hog the time. But I just wondered, and I'm not sure whether Trent or Steve could answer. What evidence backs up the prosperity hub recommendations? I do see some numbers and some, some ideas, some concepts, but I don't see any hard evidence that backs up the, the whole notion. For example, in the slideshow we saw, or in the video, I guess we saw a whole, a particular hotel chain represented as, as developing a hotel at that site. Well, having been involved, as I think Steve was, in listening to presentations from hotel operators, it takes a lot more than just the local air, regional airport to attract a hotel. At least a major one. Our neighbors in Wasaga Beach have been trying for years. So just, do we actually have some kind of written documentation that says that that particular hotel chain is interested in developing at the airport? Or is that just a concept at this point?
This may be a Steve question.
Okay, I, I think Trent can comment, but I'm pretty sure that's a concept. Having said that, you know, I think the part of when you get investment attraction and you start talking to investors, and we, and we have, there, there starts to be a cluster happening in, in, in economies of scale. And there, and there's certain levels of demand have to be, to be achieved and looked at. Having said that, Wyerton just finished a hotel feasibility study and, and, and they were quite positive about that. So I think certainly there is roles for that, and it would depend on attracting other investment. I don't know that you would lead with a hotel, but I'll let maybe Trent comment.
Thanks, Stephen, through you, Warden Hicks. But it was indeed a, a concept. However, we've had discussions with hotel chains within the last fourteen months, and they're very, some of the smaller chains are very interested in developing new areas and very interested in developing on airports. So I think that we've read the hotel studies, we've looked at the increase in tourism, we looked at what could happen at the airport, and again, put that concept together as, as a possibility. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, I guess I have Counselor O'Leary.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Good morning, County Counsel. Just two questions for now. There's a public survey and local stakeholders that have input. You gave us a list of the stakeholders. Why isn't the public survey part of this for us to look at?
Trent.
A few, Warden Hicks, the public comments are in the appendixes of the study.
Okay, and the report calls for a four point six million dollar investment in the runway in the next three to five years. You're hoping that fifty percent of that will be from grants. Is that, is the, is the remaining two point three million dollar investment coming from the county? Is that the expectation?
So through you, Warden Hicks, from our perspective, it'll be whatever the governance model is, is decided on how that split would work, whether it's between two counties and, two counties and the, and Georgian Bluffs. So whatever is decided as a concept moving forward. We've also seen great success recently and close by to you on airports that have seeked greater funding than fifty percent to free infrastructure. So there's many possibilities with that investment.
Okay, and just one more, Mr. Warden, if I could. You just mentioned the two counties again. Have you had a conversation with Bruce County? What is their interest in, in making an investment in this?
So with Bruce County, we made the, the initial presentation to kick off the study to Bruce County. The next steps were to present it to the airport owner, Georgian Bluffs, and then to Gray County. And from there, again, working with our design team through Steve and your CAO and Georgian Bluffs on the decision to take it further with, with Bruce, Bruce County. So maybe, Steve, if you have something to add to that.
I, I don't, that's, that's the process we'll go through. I think, I think it's important, though, that we determine our own strategic direction and, and where we want to go before, not necessarily before, but approaching Bruce on anything specific. Certainly, I've had conversations at a staff level. There's interest, there's interest in the study. And I think we need to, to show how we can move forward and, before asking that question. But certainly, in my mind, Bruce County will benefit. And at some point, some point, I think it's, it's important to have them involved.
In my mind, we, we need Bruce County to be a part of this before we go any further. So yes, it is important. It is for me anyways. If Bruce County, County is not in the conversation, then, you know, we don't stand a chance in this. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor O'Leary. Next is Counselor Desai.
Thank you, Warden Hicks. At, at various points, different people were bringing up the things I, I intended on. The only one that hasn't been brought up is the, the, the presentation mentions that the Canadian Coast Guard and NAV Canada has extensive equipment at, at the airport. My question is, given the infrastructure requirements that are being being presented, if we were to focus on a different airport, would the Canadian Coast Guard or, and perhaps NAV Canada, would they relocate their equipment? Would they still continue to have use of the, what's the involvement that they have in the airport? Because at the end of the day, we are as a whole responsible to the Gray County taxpayer. So I'm, I'm struggling a little bit because I agree that Bruce County needs to, as, as Counselor O'Leary said, I agree that Bruce County needs to be in this as well before we take the jump. And at the same time, as Counselor Soever mentioned, there's many parts of Gray County that would potentially be underserved. And in, in the case of Sogeen Regional Airport, there's two Gray County municipalities that, that, you, you know, own or are part owners of that, that airport. So I'm, I'm having a hard time on this. And so my question at the end of the day to the presenters is, given the infrastructure requirements, would it be wise to choose a different airport? And if we did go with a different airport, what effect would that have on the equipment that's, that's at the current airport through the Canadian Coast Guard and NAV Canada? Thank you, Warden Hicks.
Thank you, Trent.
Thanks, Warden and Counselor. So just with regards to NAV Canada, the region's weather information is gathered at the Wyerton Airport. So for any kind of closure, they're, they would have to look at what, how they were going to relocate that equipment, as an example. Both NAV Canada with their weather, human weather observation, and the Canadian Coast Guard pays a lease. So they lease the space from, from the airport for use of that space. So yes, to, for any kind of change, then there would have to be some conversations on what those two organizations would have to do.
Thank you, Counselor Desai. You're, you're good?
No further questions.
Next, Counselor Soever.
Yes, so on, on the sewer and water, now we've heard hotels mentioned. There's mention of sewer five times in the feasibility study. But there's no mention of costs for that anywhere in the feasibility study. So if this is really a feasibility study, I would think that provision of sewer and water, even if it's a huge septic system, although I, I presume that that wouldn't be acceptable, you know. I would think that you'd want to use the, the Wyerton Sewage Treatment Plant, which is in the other county that so far has shown no interest. So what is their capacity? How much capacity do they have? Do they want to give some of it up for a development in, in Gray County that they don't want to be a part of? I mean, these are all fundamental questions, which I think we need to answer before we say this is a feasibility study that we can move forward with. And following up, I, I would agree with Counselor O'Leary. Don't, everybody, let's not be shocked here, but I do agree with him on this. That, you know, I think the financials of proposal should not be, you know, half Georgian Bluffs and half Gray County. It should be twenty five percent Georgian Bluffs, twenty five percent. It should be 25% Georgian Bluffs, 25% South Bruce Peninsula, 25% Gray, Gray and 25% Bruce. Cause that are the benefiting municipalities. So, um, like, I, I think we need to firm up the numbers here. If I'm looking at the numbers here and correct me if I'm wrong, so this is the question. Over 10 years, it shows the direct project being 1.25 million in the hole if you exclude the outside benefits. Is that correct?
It's probably a Sherry question.
I'm looking at the table on, there's a table that shows the costs. It shows nine. Can't find the table now.
I think, uh, number 22, slide 22.
Yes, I think somewhere near there. Yeah.
Thank you, Warden Hicks and Counselor, for your question. Um, so the sewer, um, has been addressed through the study. Um, and it was each, uh, area being developed, um, at the specific amount that would be required in order to pull it in. And that was taken from previous studies that have been done, uh, in the past. So underneath the breakdown in the financials in the appendix section, you will see under each, uh, hub area, uh, an amount that has been allocated to that. Um, further is that there is a development fee that was suggested, uh, to be implemented for those who are uh, being serviced by that water to gain that momentum back from the, um, from the infrastructure cost to that. And, uh, that also is included in the study. Um, I'm sorry, so that was water and sewer. I'm sorry, you had so many questions in there. I apologize. I lost track of a couple.
Don't worry, uh, Counselor Soever can, can follow up.
So, so I was looking at, not the, the one where it's by area, but the prosperity hub financials on page
22?
Revenue of 10.132 and a cost of 11.38. And it actually only shows us going anywhere close to being revenue generating in year 10. So, you know, that's a negative 1.25, I think, um, over the 10 years. And that ignores the, the revenue which might accrue because if we're looking at sewer and water, that's accruing in Bruce County and, you know, but it just, I'm looking at direct project. So is my understanding correct? It's on slide 22.
So there are a couple of, uh, areas to, uh, look at. And again, this would have to be completed through a full, uh, business case study. And that would be on how much money would be, uh, presented from the government side as well in order to compensate for that. So these numbers do not include any, um, government funds at all. So the financials that you're seeing hasn't taken into account infrastructure that would be coming, uh, through grants, um, from the governments and various levels of governments, which we know are available for things like the sewer, water, infrastructure development, employment, land development, et cetera, et cetera. Um, so with those numbers, you could say that if nothing, if everything happened as exactly planned, then that's the number that you would be looking at. But of course, we have to take a real good look at where those numbers would sit, uh, without, uh, grants that we don't know what those outcomes would be.
So, and just one more.
If I might, yeah, just quickly on what Sherry was just talking about, if I reference slide 26, I see the star at the bottom there, additional costs can't be anticipated without further studies. So I'm gathering what you're saying here, uh, in this study is that you require further studies to properly get, uh, a fix on those numbers.
Thank you, Warden Hicks. Yes, so the, um, throughout the study, it speaks to, uh, hiring a CEO who will be in charge of creating business cases and taking that to the various levels of government in order to develop the prosperity hub. And there are unknowns in that because it depends on, uh, the marketing investment, um, the, uh, which companies are going to be attracted to the area, how big of an area is it going to be, um, that there's so many variables that as this plan develops, again, this is a concept, it was a concept put forward. Um, very modest, uh, type of development of the prosperity hub going very slow over 10 years. Um, and, and again, it would, it would be dependent on who comes in there in order to push this forward and the marketing efforts that are put into that as well.
Thank you. I apologize for interrupting you, Counselor Soever. You can continue.
Yes, well, you, you took the words right out of my mouth is that, you know, it looks like we're, 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 we're being asked to approve this conceptual plan. But yet, uh, there needs to be a lot more work done to justify the business case. And, uh, I suspect Georgian Bluffs probably wishes they would have done that too before they took on the responsibility for the airport. So, um, I don't want to speak for them, but, you know, looking at this, you know, this is conceptual plan, great, but, you know, we're being asked to start down the road on something without those additional studies that you referred to, Mr., just want to highlight that.
Thank you, sir. Um, Counselor Carlton.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I think on page 26 where it, um, states additional costs cannot be anticipated without further studies, that is in regards to closing down the airport and what the total cost would be to actually shut it down. I don't think those refer to the prosperity hub figures. Thank you.
All right. Anything to add on that, Sherry?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Madam C E O, C A O.
Thanks, Warden Hicks. I, I just want to be clear that, um, what's being presented today is a concept plan that was funded through RTO seven, Georgian Bluffs and Gray County. Your, there's no decision to be made about this concept plan itself. Where the discussion needs to happen about making decisions comes with Steve's report, which is later in our agenda today, where, um, we're asking that those recommendations simply be received. And then Steve and staff go further to, um, make some recommendations about a path forward. So, um, I just wanted to be clear about that, that we are simply receiving Steve's report and then considering the recommendations, um, based on some of the information that's been provided to us today.
Thank you. Counselor Potter.
Thank you. Well, given what we've just heard, then, uh, part of Steve's report, I know we're not there yet, but, uh, is saying that we go ahead with negotiating an agreement. And so, uh, you know, we're, if we're going to, well, I guess we'll get into that when we talk about the report, but I just, uh, we're negotiating agreement based on this study. And I think this study is not really answering all our questions.
Through you, Mr. Warden. I believe Steve will have some additional information to share with Counselor in the time he presents his report.
Very good. That's probably a great segue for us to move on. Counselor Burley.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. A great, uh, presentation, Trent. Great con- conversation from all council members. Georgian Bluffs made a decision to buy the airport from South Bruce Peninsula. I still think it was a wise decision. We've been struggling with, uh, an asset that it's way beyond a lower tier municipality to handle. We've done everything we possibly can to try and make it work, but it's an asset. I want to read it, just a statement I have here in front of me. It's a reasonable asset. First and foremost, this is not about Georgian Bluffs. This is about the prime economic development asset in the county that can attract jobs and increase industrial, commercial tax concessions to help lower the pressures on residential rural properties. It, it's not about Georgian Bluffs. It's about the county as a whole. Here's an asset that we can make to, uh, bring better agni development and so on for the whole area. And it's just one comment I want to make.
Thank you, sir. I think that's it. Um, I don't see any other hands, Madam clerk, at least not on my screen. I do see Counselor Soever.
Based on what we've heard just recently, um, the, the study is now being called a conceptual study, which I believe is more appropriate. Um, you know, in the mining industry, we have very defined terms. And once you call something a feasibility study, it's the plus or minus five to 10% of the, you know, the actual, so is this, I'm just asking the consultants, is this appropriately called a feasibility study or a conceptual study?
Trent?
Thank you through you, Warden Hicks. Um, I think it's, it's a good start on the feasibility to move forward. Can I call it a hybrid? I think, um, there's a great foundation, a great basis to lead it into a business plan. And what the business plan will do is flush out all the questions you're, you're asking on, um, you know, if we look at in business, it's what are the revenue opportunities? What, what is the cost to do the business? So what's our return on investment? Uh, so that business plan is just a really critical next step, uh, to take, um, the concept and the feasibility of the ideas moving forward. So I think that is, uh, absolutely a, a critical step, uh, to move forward with.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. I think it's time, uh, for us to move on. I want to thank, uh, Trent and Sherry for delegation. We had a very good discussion and more to come. Uh, Counsel, with your permission, uh, I would like, I'm going to suggest that we deal with the consent agenda and then take a break for lunch. Could I see nodding up heads if you agree with that? If you don't agree, then don't nod your head. Okay, most people nodding their heads. So that's what I'm going to suggest we do, uh, next. So that takes me to, um, item four. Uh, we only have, have two items on the consent agenda. Is there any need to pull either of those? Seeing no one suggesting that.
I'm sorry, Mr. Warden. I do see Counselor Soever's hand. I'm not sure if it's a.
Yeah. Counselor Soever?
Sorry, that's a remnant.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, then I'm going to move then to item, uh, uh, five, uh, which is the consent, uh, agenda. Um, it's been moved by Counselor Columbus and seconded by Counselor Hutchison that we approved the consent agenda. Is there anyone opposed to that? And seeing none, that is carried. So we will take a break for lunch. Is half an hour suitable? I would suggest that ma- maybe we come back at a quarter to, to one. So, um, at, uh, 12:45, we would come back. Is that sufficient for everyone? Mostly nods. All right, so let's take a break then. We'll have a lunch break, come back at 12:45 sharp. We'll see you then. Mostly nods. All right, so let's take a break then. We'll have a lunch break. Come back at 12:45 sharp. We'll see you then.
Warden Hicks, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Yes, I can. Okay, um, real quick, Christine is, she's left, she was doing the meeting in the office, had to go do, finish the meeting in her home office there, but anyways, she is signed in, but she's having problems with the camera, but she says she is in attendance and is linked in, just so you know.
So she can hear us, or?
Yeah, she's just having problems with the camera setup, but I think it's just gonna probably queue her in, but she said she is signed in, because she could see me, so I'm just letting you know.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, how are we looking?
Not quite.
Not quite yet, okay.
You do have quorum now, Mr. Warden.
Thank you very much, I will press on then. We are now going to be dealing with item six A, which is the Conservation Authority Act Regulation Proposals, this item has been moved by Counselor, excuse me, O'Leary, and seconded by Counselor Carlton. Is it, sorry, you just told me this, Madam Clerk, but is it Randy or is it Scott that's presenting?
It's Randy for this one, Scott for the next.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Warden Hicks, and good afternoon, County Council. First, I just want to thank both Tim and Jennifer for their presentation they made earlier. I won't repeat the regulatory changes that were presented as part of their, their report, but we'll note that a summary of the proposed changes in the regulatory proposals are highlighted in the staff report. What I will highlight are some of the potential implications of the proposed changes that staff have flagged, and also highlight some of the recommendations. So what we don't know at this stage is, is kind of the first category of, of the potential implications. So the MECP has noted that they will be consulting on the next phase of the regulatory proposals in the coming months, and the next phase will be related to municipal levies and standards, requirements for non-mandatory programs and services, and policy and guidance to implement the legislative and regulatory framework. So until we see the details being proposed in the next phase, it's difficult for municipalities and conservation authorities to understand the full potential implications of the Phase One proposed regulations. So with that, staff are recommending that Phase Two regulation details be provided prior to the province finalizing and passing the Phase One reg proposals. This would allow conservation authorities and municipalities to review all the regulatory proposals being considered in order to truly understand the potential implications for the proposed changes, and to provide comprehensive comments back to the province. The second or second potential implication category is around non-mandatory programs and service restrictions. So far, it appears that there will be flexibility provided to municipalities and conservation authorities as to what can be included in the agreements when it comes to non-mandatory programs and services. However, if the proposed regulations were to put restrictions on what could be included or could be provided by a conservation authority, then this could have an impact on existing programs and services that the county and local municipalities rely on today. It could also impact future collaboration and partnership opportunities such as partnering with the conservation authorities on implementing our climate change action plan, for example, partnering to update sub watershed plans, natural heritage review, and specifically for Gray County, continuing our contract with Gray Sobel to manage the county's forests and trails. So it's recommended that the regulations provide as much flexibility as possible for conservation authorities and counties and municipalities to continue those non-mandatory programs and services being provided, not only today, but also for those future opportunities and collaboration. The third category of potential implications is inconsistent delivery of non-mandatory programs and services. So the proposed framework would allow municipalities to either opt in or opt out of continuing to fund non-mandatory programs and services that are being offered by conservation authorities. If some municipalities decide to opt out, what this could cause is that other municipalities would then have to pay additional costs to continue those non-mandatory programs and services, and collectively, there may not be enough funds to continue certain programs and services. This framework could also create a patchwork of programs and services offered throughout the county or the watershed, which could create further confusion over who provides what programs and services, and result in an inconsistent delivery of, of those programs and services. Based on that, staff are recommending that the regulations allow for the consistent development of those non-mandatory programs and services, both at the county-regional scale as well as the watershed scale. This can be achieved by allowing conservation authorities and multiple municipalities throughout the county to enter into a single MOU or agreement, and by working collectively to create a consistent template that we can all utilize. This would help to ensure that there is that consistent level of programs and services being provided countywide and across the watershed. Conservation Authority staff and county municipal staff were working on creating a consistent template prior to the release of the proposed regulations, and we hope that the regulatory proposals will not impact that work that has been done to date, and will allow the option for multiple municipalities to enter into a single MOU or agreement with a conservation authority. The fourth category of potential implications is impact on staff resources. So the proposed regulatory framework will have an impact on staff resources for conservation authorities as well as county municipal staff, just to be able to complete and update those MOUs and agreements for those non-mandatory programs and services. The provincial municipal election may also impact the ability to meet the proposed timelines. The release of the next phase of the reg proposals could also have an impact on meeting the proposed timelines if these details are not provided in a timely fashion. So therefore, staff are recommending that the proposed timeline be extended by a year to January 1st, 2024, for entering into those non-mandatory programs and service agreements. I think you heard in the presentation earlier today that Gray Sobel was asking for at least a six-month extension for both the transition plan deadline and the deadline for agreements, and six months maybe, maybe possible. We're suggesting just a little bit more flexibility and are proposing and suggesting a full year extension. Just given the ongoing pressures faced by the pandemic, as well as the fact that a provincial municipal election will be occurring in 2022, which could result in changes at provincial and municipal governments, could cause lame duck periods, etc., the current timeframes, we think, will just be difficult to achieve. So by extending the deadline by at least that six month or one year would allow enough time to finalize and update the agreements. The extension would also, again, allow more time for us to all review and understand the Phase Two reg proposals once they are released. The fifth category of potential implications is, is around new mandatory requirements and administrative requirements which could add additional strain, especially to rural conservation authorities. As you heard in the presentation room, Tim, rural conservation authorities tend to already run on leaf lean staff resources and budgets. The additional requirements under the framework is likely to add additional strain to rural conservation authorities just to administer the framework, as well as to address any new service standards and requirements regarding the delivery of mandatory programs. This could include the possible increases in natural hazard management, administering the proposed community advisory boards that council heard about during the presentation, developing property management plans, developing a core watershed-based resource manager strategy and land manager strategy, just to name a few of those mandatory programs that would be on top of what the conservation authorities already provide. These new mandatory requirements could have an impact on delivering those non-mandatory services and programs as limited conservation authority staff resources will need to focus on meeting those mandatory requirements. With that, staff are recommending that the province consider providing additional funding to support new mandatory programs and services, as well as administration costs for the non-mandatory programs and service requirements. The additional funding would allow conservation authorities to not have to fund these new requirements from other sources, including through municipal levies. And the final implication category, and you heard this clearly through the presentation from Tim, is the concern that the recreation and education has been excluded from the mandatory definition for conservation authority-owned lands. These recreational educational opportunities are very important to Gray County residents and visitors to our area, and by not making these mandatory could result in some of these opportunities no longer being offered due to funding constraints. As you heard through the presentation during the pandemic, Gray County and other municipalities across the province have seen a significant increase in demand for outdoor recreational and natural spaces. And conservation authorities are one of the largest landowners in the province, and therefore, they are well positioned to help provide these spaces, including related educational content, both while we're going still through the pandemic and into the post-pandemic future. So we see great merit in having conservation authorities continue to own and operate such spaces and provide recreational opportunities. Some of the education programming also serves as an opportunity to connect Gray County's youth to careers and jobs within the realm of forestry, environmental conservation, and general land stewardship, and finding trained and qualified individuals within those sectors has proven to be more challenging in our area. So by, by not recognizing these environmental education opportunities as mandatory, this is likely to have a considerable impact on their ability to continue having longstanding implications on the county's economic development efforts and filling the need for local employers. So staff are recommending that the province include recreation and education opportunities on conservation authority lands as mandatory programs and services. By adding these as mandatory, it will ensure that these opportunities continue to be provided for current and future residents and visitors to our area. So based on all that, the, the motion, the recommendation is to receive the staff report, and that the report be forwarded to the provinces as Gray County's comments on the proposed changes, that their report be shared with local municipalities and conservation authorities within Gray, and that staff be authorized to proceed prior to council approval as the comment deadline is actually June 27th, which is before the next council meeting. And be happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Randy. Council, are there any questions? Not all at once, okay. I did, oh, I see one question from Counselor Mill.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Thanks, Randy, for the report. Just regarding the, the notion that this could jeopardize our ability to contract with the sogging or gray Sobel for our forestry and trail needs. Can you just expand on that a little bit more, like, what is the threat there? Like, would we be, or would the conservation authority rather potentially be prohibited from offering those services, or, or maybe? I'm not, I'm not clear on that, or maybe we don't know yet, I'm not sure.
Through you, Mr. Warden, it's more the latter, that just based on the details that we haven't seen yet with respect to the non-mandatory programs and services and what the potential restrictions might be with respect to those. We don't know if that could be impacted. What we're hearing from the province is that they are going to be building in flexibility to allow conservation authorities and municipalities to kind of choose our own adventure a little bit in terms of those non-mandatory programs and services, so. So we're hoping that that is the case. We're pretty certain if, if that flexibility is built in, we'll be able to continue the relationship that we have with conservation authority being able to manage our forests and trails. But there's a bit of a question mark around that until we see the details in the, in the final regs.
Right, well, thank you for that, and I just, I, I hope the, the flexibility piece is really emphasized in the report or the, yeah, the report to the province, because that, that's pretty important, I think, at least from our perspective. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do not see any other questions. So Counselor Gamble, that you have your hand up? Go right ahead.
You're muted, sir.
Yeah, Randy, sorry. I'm having trouble figuring out why, what's in this for the government? Why would they do this? Like, there doesn't seem to be any real rationale behind this. Like, it just seems to be a, the only thing I can see is financial, and you know, having been involved with them, I, I, I see where maybe it's leading down the path where all provincial finance funding is taken out of conservation. I don't know. I, I just don't see what they're, what they're heading for here. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Warden. When we, we had the opportunity to attend that, that webinar that MECP put on, and, and there definitely was, I think, from the county municipalities side, especially rural counties municipalities, we see a lot of merit in continuing, obviously, the, the current relationship that we have with conservation authorities. As I mentioned, we, we rely on the programs and services that they currently provide, and, and we work with them in close partnership with a number of programs and initiatives. I think there's, on the other side, I think there were some comments from folks from, say, the development industry, from other organizations like the Ontario Landowner Association and others who are Uh, other organizations like the Ontario Landowner Association and others who are concerned that that maybe conservation authorities in the past have have. Are are overstretching their their original mandate. Um, uh, we don't see it that way from a county staff perspective. We see. Uh, like I said, them as 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 close partners and in helping us to move forward with. A number of programs initiatives that that both the county and local municipalities uh have worked on in the past and into the future. And so we want to continue that that relationship, but that, just to give you a bit of context in terms of, I think. The province is hearing from a multitude of different stakeholders, all with varying opinions. And I think the province is is trying to come up with some uh regulations and a framework that uh will hopefully try to appease. All different stakeholders uh with those various opinions. I don't know if Kim or any of what else says anything further to add, but I think that's that's just. The best I could answer that question at this stage.
Thank you, Randy. Thank you, Counsel Gamble. I believe that's it for questions. I don't see any other hands. If that's the case, then I'm going to call the question on the motion to receive. The report, have it forwarded to the province and to the lower tiers and as well to the conservation authorities. Uh, is there anyone opposed to that motion? Seeing none, I will say that that is carried. Thank you very much, Randy.
Thank you.
Scott, you're on deck. We are now moving to item six B. Uh, dealing with the um. Oh, am I at that right? Uh, just lost my place here. Yeah, item. Uh, doesn't say here. My apologies. Bear with me a second. My computer is playing games with me. There we go. Item six B, propose updates to land use compatibility guidelines. This item's been moved by Counselor Hutchison. And seconded by Counselor Desai. Scott, you have the floor.
Thanks, uh, Warden Hicks, and and good after, good afternoon to members of County Council and everybody uh tuning in today. Uh, so when planners talk to uh young children about about what planning is and and try to explain planning, one of the things we often say is planning thinks about what should go where and why. So where do we want our residential uses? Where do we want our industrial uses and our commercial uses? And and I certainly don't mean to be reductive or address counsel in a way we would address a a class full of grade threes. But it's a useful example just in in explaining this this uh this report. What the ministry has put before us is an update to a series of of land use guidelines. Which inform planners and and proponents and municipalities on how we look at separations between uh what they call major facilities. So those would be things like industrial uses. Uh, railroads or or airports or or uh extraction facilities and sensitive uses. So things like residential or or maybe institutional uses such as a school or. Or a long term care home in that regard. Um, so these guidelines help us determine um what the appropriate uh sort of setback or buffer in between would be. And and mitigation measures that could be used to to mitigate any impacts between these uses. And what the ministry has done is is proposed some new guidelines in this regard. Uh, that would replace some some existing guidelines that are maybe a little long in the tooth and and the existing guidelines date back to the early nineteen ninety. So. We're thankful that the ministry is has taken on this initiative and is is looking at at replacing these guidelines. Uh, the guidelines would be applied at at both the official plan and zoning stage. So there would be policies. Uh, in the official plan and and zoning, which refer back to these guidelines uh as per the direction from the provincial policy statement. Uh, and and then they get applied more specifically when we have new uh Planning Act applications. So if someone were to come in. Uh, for a new zoning amendment, consent application, or even a site plan, uh, that's when we could apply some of the recommendations in these guidelines. The these new guidelines in specific introduce uh two terms and and like any good planning document, there's new acronyms we we learn here. Uh, the first is is minimum separation distances. Uh, so these are referred to as MSDs. And and this is not unlike the the formula we would use in in rural and agricultural areas to separate our livestock facilities. Uh, from from our 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 dwellings in that regard. And so the minimum separation distances are just as they sound, the minimum distance we need between, say, an industrial use and a sensitive use. Uh, to ensure that there's there's a uh little to no impact there. Uh, the guidelines also use the term areas of influence, so acronym is A O Is. Um, and these are areas that would be beyond the minimum separation distance where you might still have uh some influence. So there could be still some some noise or odor or or dust. Um, from those uses that could impact the neighboring uses. Um, so while the the minimum separation distances represent the minimum separation. Um, those areas of influence, if you like, represent sort of the study area or the area where you might want to to look at mitigation measures uh to to address compatibility in that regard. Um, so in a nutshell, that's uh, that's what the guidelines are looking at. Um, staff have reviewed the guidelines. We've had the opportunity to attend a Ministry of the Environment, Conservation and Parks. Uh, webinar on this, similar to to what Randy just talked about with the Conservation Authorities uh project. Uh, and we've also had the chance to to discuss these um proposed guideline updates with with municipal staff. Uh, at a local planners meeting on June fourth. So we've tried to collect some of the feedback we heard from municipal planners as as well. Uh, as well as our own opinions as as county staff. And um, we've outlined a series of recommendations in the report, which I'll just go through very briefly. Uh, for for council's benefit and anybody tuning in. Uh, the first recommendation we see is is um, we really would like the the ability and and the wording within the guidelines to apply some flexibility. Uh, to consider uh site specific scenarios or community specific scenarios in this regard. Um, so one example of this might be um where you have an existing industrial facility and you've got new residential uses proposed nearby. Um, maybe there's already a a whole series of residential uses um in between that industrial facility and the new uses. And and so these new residences, new residences would be even further than the existing ones. Uh, we think there should be some flexibility there versus with respect to the setbacks. Uh, and also sort of the the compatibility measures that might be undertaken there. Um, each of our communities is very different and 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 each of our our industrial uses or sensitive uses also have their own differences in that regard. We also think on the theme of flexibility, there should be the the ability to apply um flexibility with respect to minor expansions, either of an industrial use or of a uh. Of an existing um sensitive use. So so for example, if there's a house near an existing industry. Um, and and that house wants to put a a deck on and and requires a minor variance. Um, we certainly don't want to see someone need to go through a full compatibility study because they want to add a deck. Uh, similarly, if we had an existing industry, uh, let's say Chatten's Ice Cream, for example, and and they're looking at a minor expansion to their plant. And and it's not increasing, um, it's not going any closer to neighboring houses or or increasing the incompatibility, if you will. Um, then it might be onerous to consider a a full compatibility study for for modest expansions to either existing uh sensitive uses or industry in that regard. Staff also have concern about the the ability of the the guidelines to potentially freeze land. Um, if if uh applied through a strict lens. And what I mean by freezing land would be if we had uh an existing industrial park. Um, and and then we had uh neighboring lands and and further along, we had residential lands. Um, what would those neighboring lands be used for? Uh, if they weren't uh feasible to use for for residential? And and certainly the province has suggested they're not looking to sterilize or freeze any lands in this regard, and you could look at interim use or um. Um, buffer uses in between such as parking lots or or say, commercial uses as the buffer between industrial and residential uses. And and we see merit in this in some approaches, but not in all instances. And we just worry that especially in some of our smaller communities, um, having this uh strict separation distance applied to to some of our industry. Or or vice versa, to some of our residential uses, um, could result in in some existing zoned land. Uh, not being able to be used for for what's already in in the zoning in that regard. One of the other things we're asking for from the province uh before finalizing these guidelines is is clear transition policies. Um, so if the guidelines get passed, similar to the way they're proposed today, uh, what happens to developments that might already be in process? So if we think about, say, plan a subdivision where. Whereby maybe they've already built the first phase of of the subdivision, but there's there's further phases still to be built. Um, what would it do to to um existing applications that are in process whereby a proponent has prepared? All the necessary studies in support of of the current policy as it stands today. Uh, and what would it do to to landowners that already own land for the purposes of development, but maybe haven't put in their applications yet? Um, so we have concerns there. So we want some clear transition policies in that regard. Notably to County Council, uh, the guidelines also apply to to aggregate. So those are our pits and quarries across the county. Um, and as it stands right now, the guidelines appear to to treat pits and quarries uh with a very similar uh lens or brush. Um, and and don't seem to take into account differences between, say, a a pit whereby you might have sort of the extraction of the gravel. Uh, versus a quarry whereby you have the the blasting of materials and arguably some greater impacts. Um, similarly, they don't seem to to take into account uh the differences in in size between some of these operations. And so we know across our county, we have some very, very small pits um that have very low extraction rates. Uh, versus we have some very large operations that have have near constant activity during the the spring, summer, fall months. Uh, so we think there should be the the ability to apply a case by case uh lens in this regard to take into account. Uh, the differences between some of these uh uses and their potential impacts in that regard. Uh, we would also note that the guidelines uh apply to to uh citing new sensitive uses in proximity to pits and quarries. Um, but the reciprocal is is not also true. So when we're citing a new pit or quarry, uh, we don't have to apply the same tests. Uh, and and while we see some merit here in terms of, um, certainly there's only uh the ability to cite pits and quarries and in in locations where we have that resource. Uh, we also see challenges here and and concerns amongst amongst the public about about fairness in that regard. Uh, where people already have existing uh residences or sensitive uses across the countryside. On the themes of pits and quarries, um, we also see the potential for these guidelines um to have the ability to impact um existing and proposed county projects. And and notably in this regard, I'd I'd highlight the the proposed uh Rockwood Terrace redevelopment in in Durham. Uh, there is a a neighboring pit operation there, and while staff feel that that pit is is very low usage and potentially low impact on compatibility. A strict read of the guidelines um would suggest that that there could be the need to to uh look at compatibility studies or or further changes to the county's uh. Potential plans in that regard. Uh, in speaking with municipal staff across the county, uh, staff also flagged some some municipal projects that could be in a similar boat. Uh, whereby the municipality municipalities have future development plans uh that could also be impacted by these guidelines. We would further note here that these uh guidelines would also impact um uh citing new uses such as transportation depots. Uh, new or expanded wastewater treatment facilities or or new municipal landfills in that regard too. So certainly they would uh. They would cause us to to consider our our plans in that regard as well. Um, the guidelines and it's shown in in the staff report. Um, outline a series of industrial uses from from aggregate to manufacturing to wastewater treatment facilities. And give suggested distances there for both the MSD and the A O Is. And while we're thankful that the province has has uh offered this uh to us. Uh, we would suggest that there might be the ability for the province to offer a a greater range of of uh examples and uses in that regard. Uh, so some of the uses that could be considered missing from that list might include things like airports. Uh, further guidance on transportation corridors as as well as uh things like sawmills. So if if the province could offer further guidance there. Um, it would uh allow for more um opportunity for consistent interpretation between municipalities. Uh, versus municipalities jumping to different conclusions in that regard. Um, there's also uh distances in in the guidelines um which surround both uh active existing landfills. Uh, as well as closed landfill and dump sites. And and certainly county staff see the need to to uh buffer our existing landfill operations. Uh, for the purposes of compatibility, but also to look at, you know, potential future expansion to those landfills. Um, but we see maybe the need to to um treat for former closed landfills a little bit differently. And as many amongst the council table will remember, um, the county and a number of our member municipalities have done significant uh amounts of study and work on. On ensuring that uh that there's no risk or compatibility issues with some of our closed landfills. Uh, and we worry that the the province's uh uh treatment of these facilities requiring a minimum of five hundred meters of separation distance. Uh, could again jeopardize some of the lands in proximity to those uh facilities and and some of which is is in our uh serviced settlement areas as well. Um, county staff also, um, sorry, county staff certainly see the need to protect our industrial parks from from neighboring incompatible uses and. And we would certainly class those industrial parks as major facilities as they're defined in in the provincial policy statement. Um, but we see the need for for maybe um a further definition in terms of a minor facility. Um, so again, if if we consider the industrial park a major facility, maybe a minor facility um would be a small arm on farm industry. Um, if we think of some of the the uh shops across the southern half of our county, um whereby you have uh small scale uh uh businesses on farms. Uh, maybe those would fall into more of that minor category and and require less separation in there. Uh, similarly, we might also look at certain clean industries or or historic uh um industries that that aren't in our our business parks. As as some of those areas where again, you might uh think about some some lesser separations in that regard. The province has made it clear that agricultural uses are exempt uh from these guidelines, which is nice to see. Um, but what's not clear through the read of these guidelines is um agricultural related uses. So I think about things like uh green elevators or drying operations. Um, so we're just looking for some certainty there with respect to whether or not uh um some of these setbacks and and guidelines would apply in in those regards. Um, finally, I am, I am getting near the end here. Um, the the structure of the guidelines is such that where new uses are proposed in those areas of influence. Uh, there's the need for proponents to undertake compatibility studies uh to to look at things like noise and odor and and dust and particulate matter in that regard. Um, staff certainly see the need for these compatibility studies in in some instances. Um, and the onus would then be on the municipalities to either review or peer review uh these compatibility studies. Um, but we would flag that that uh the the need to complete these studies and and the need to potentially either review or peer review these studies. Um, could add additional time and cost to the development process. And in some cases, it may also raise issue with respect to um the availability of experts to either complete or peer review these studies. Um, certainly, there's there's a a number of of acoustics experts that could do the the noise studies. Uh, but things like uh odor experts uh uh perhaps are are less prevalent across across the county. Uh, and finally, the other, the other uh concern we would flag here is um. The way it works currently is is when a proponent is looking to complete uh a compatibility study um next to a a neighboring industrial facility. Um, they're expected to approach that uh industrial operator and ask for details about their operations. Um, to to try to get a handle on on what some of the emissions would be. Um, there's no onus on that industrial operator to to uh comply and to to offer those details. Um, so it was certainly, it would simply be at the choice of that operator. Um, in the cases where where they can't uh get those details, um, the person completing the compatibility study might just have to assume a worst case scenario. Uh, or similarly, if there was vacant industrial land and and they were completing a better compatibility study, again, we might use a worst case scenario. Um, staff see some merit there, but we also note that this could result in in sort of an an overplanning. Uh, or or increased setbacks beyond what's actually needed based on on the uses that could be considered by the zoning or that are there today. So. These are just some of the the concerns that we've flagged. Um, the the recommendation on this uh report is that we uh. That the report be be received by uh by committee of the whole here today. Um, and that we submit these comments as the uh as the county's uh comments on the the proposed environmental registry posting. I would note there was a minor typo in the recommendation. We are recommending that this be shared with with uh member municipalities across the county. Um, but it's probably not needed to be shared with with uh conservation authorities. Maybe I just copied Randy's recommendation and and to respond accordingly. So I apologize for that. So uh certainly be happy to take any any questions if there are any at this stage.
Thank you very much, Scott. Um, I see questions from first Counselor Mill.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Um, thank you, Scott, for the report. There's a lot there to think about. Um, you mentioned uh. The potential uh conflict or potential impacts on rail lines. Um, could one anticipate impacts? On a former rail line that maybe now is a walking trail or multi use trail that a municipality may or may not own. And the said municipality may want to put the rails back down someday to service thousands of people. Instead of pouring millions into, oh, I don't know, say, an airport. Um, is there a, is there a possibility that this could actually neuter that entire trail or reuse of that trail?
Through you, Mr. Warden. Um, it's it's a great point, Counselor Milton. Um, I think the one, the one comment I'd note there is, and and you know, if we take just, for example, the the county's uh C P rail trail in this regard. Um, if rail were to be established there, there would be processes that would need to be undertaken uh to reestablish rail in that regard. Um, and it would look at a variety of things from from presumably compatibility, but also to to the the suitability of the infrastructure that's that's currently there. Uh, things like existing bridges and culverts on that trail as well. Um, so. In in my opinion, this guideline on its own may not necess- So in in my opinion, this guideline on its own may not necessarily prevent that, but it 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 may add to to the need to study the matter. I should note, though, that this this guideline is is replacing existing guidelines. And and there would already be the need to look at compatibility there based on both the the provincial policy statement and policies in our own county official plan in that regard.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mill. Councillor Suaver, is your hand up?
Yes.
Go right ahead.
Okay, so I I note that it doesn't affect agricultural uses, but it does affect agricultural related uses, particularly meat meat processing plants and slaughterhouses and also grain elevators and grain drying operations. So I was wondering, since we're going to be amending the wording anyway to delete the conservation authorities, whether we might be able to replace those words with the agriculture advisory committee. So they might have, we might have their input as to any concerns that our agricultural community would have. So if we're gonna bring an amendment to it, I would like to propose that we just don't delete those words, but replace them with agricultural advisory committee.
Okay, so that is an amendment, and I would suggest that we deal with the amendment. So if you want to move that, I'll I'll ask for a secondary.
Still seconded, Christine Robinson.
I I saw councillor Potter first, I apologize. So moved by councillor Suaver and seconded by councillor Potter. That the recommendations would strike conservation authorities and instead add the agricultural advisory committee. Any discussion about that? Councillor Potter.
Thank you. Actually, my question was on the same sort of topic and but slightly different in that I was asking, going to ask about value added farm operations. For example, a farmer who does welding a farm or or even does wine or something like that from their farm property. You know, those are all very important to the agricultural industry. Especially the third and fourth generation farmers who are trying to make a go of it. Without selling out to the larger interests, if you will. So I I don't know, Scott, is there a is is there anything in the provincial report that you see that threatens those value added industries? Because it it doesn't really, it 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 doesn't appear that they or it appears they do apply to agriculture related uses. And some of those agriculture related uses are what keeps a farm going.
So I'm I'm going to stop you there, councillor Potter. It is somewhat related to the to the amended, the amendment that we are dealing with, but not exactly on point. So I'm going to ask us to deal with just simply a a vote on whether we want to delete forwarding the report to the conservation authorities and and adding instead the agricultural advisory committee. And then we'll come back to your question if that's okay with you. So any other questions or comments on the actual amendment?
The CAO Windgrove and councillor Desai.
Go ahead, Madam CAO. Oh, you're muted.
Sorry. Just to note that this consultation closes on July the third. So while I think it's entirely appropriate to have discussions with the agricultural advisory committee. We do, if we're going to get these the comments into the province in order to in time to meet the deadline. We may need to do those things in parallel and then provide further follow up to the province, just so that we're not outside of those guideline times.
Thank you for that. It's a good point. Councillor Desai.
Thank you, Warden. Next, my question through you is to councillor Suaver. I I don't disagree with either removing the conservation authorities or forwarding it to the agricultural advisory group. My question is, does councillor Suaver envision the group providing further comments? Or is it just a forward them for information? Thank you.
Councillor Suaver. You're muted, sir.
It could be forwarded to the members of the committee and given the timelines, I'm sure that anybody who had concerns would respond. So I mean, I don't think it can be a formal committee process. It's unfortunate probably that this wasn't brought to the last meeting of the agriculture advisory committee, but you know, given the timelines, you know, at least we should forward it to them for information and you know, the removal of the conservation authorities was a suggestion by staff because I I understand they they was included inadvertently.
Okay. May I have a follow up?
Sure, please.
Thank you. My follow up is to staff. And and I do take the point well that it was recommended by staff to remove conservation authorities. I mean, as a kid, I was always told you can copy the homework, you just have to change it a bit. I guess Scott forgot that. My question is, I I I just wanted to clarify that CAO Windgrove did say that if the advisory group did have further comments that we could amend or or have an addendum to the comments that we'd sent. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
I think she's talking about perhaps providing an update.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Warden. Each ministry handles these situations in their own way. But I I would certainly want to get the body, the the bulk of our comments in within the timeline that the province has set. Just in case they were being quite strict about their interpretation of that deadline. But I see nothing wrong with with sending further comments on after the after the commenting period has closed specifically.
Okay, are we ready to call the question on the amendment? Is there anyone opposed to the amendment? I see none. That is Carrie. So councillor Potter, we will go back to your question now. I believe you're Scott, do you recall the question that councillor Potter asked, or do you need him to repeat?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. I I think it related back to some of the agricultural related uses, but some of the on farm uses such as say, a welding shop or a winery or or things of that nature. So the guideline, the guidelines, in my opinion, seem to split up different uses. And and as councillor Suaver earlier pointed out, they they do have very specific categories for for things like meat processing and and slaughterhouses in that regard. But they're not clear on 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 certain other uses. And so that was one of our comments is the need for clarity with respect to to agriculture related uses. So an agriculture related use could be a winery where you have, you know, the manufacturing of the wine on the same site where you're also growing the grapes. Or it could also be, as I as I highlighted earlier, the grain elevators or drying operations. So it's not clear as to whether or not it applies there. It certainly doesn't apply to the primary agricultural production. But there's certain other uses where where it's not clear. With respect to some of the on farm industry, if we think of some of, say, the the Mennonite shops that we have in in areas of of Southgate and and Great Highlands and Chatsworth. It would appear that some of those shops could fall under some of the industrial categories. And therefore, they would be applicable under this guideline. But I guess staff are seeking perhaps a little more clarity in that regard as as to how it would apply to on farm uses. And we're also suggesting that maybe some of those on farm uses could get treated as as more of a minor facility. So that they're they're easier to cite versus the major facilities that we might look to be including in our in our business and industrial parks in that regard. So I'm not sure if that answers your question, councillor Potter, but I'm happy to to attempt to answer it better if if that doesn't.
No, thank you. And through you, Warden. Yes, thank you, Scott, because I think, you know, some of these are vital to family farms and and we want to keep them going. I do have a second question if I can, if I can go ahead with it. And Scott, this does the is there anything involving communications towers? Because they are becoming more and more an issue, at least in our area and I'm sure in others as well. And I didn't see any mention of that. So I wondered if there are any implications for communications towers included in any of this.
Through you, Mr. Warden. I I'd have to go back through. I don't recall any any specific mention of of communications towers in that regard. When I look back at the provincial policy statement definition of a major facility. It refers to various types of of industry. It refers to things like energy generation facilities and and transmission systems. So perhaps it could 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 fit under a transmission system. But I think that applies more to the energy generation rather than the communications towers. The other challenge we have with with communications towers, as as council will be aware, is is in most cases, the communications towers are federally regulated. So while it might affect municipalities, if we were citing new sensitive uses, it may not necessarily apply to a federally regulated facility being cited. So I don't think it would necessarily apply, but I'd have to kind of go back through the guidelines with a finer tooth comb in that regard.
Thank you. I I do know that when we've had communications towers, sometimes they get told that it's the local council will have the final say.
Randy, I saw you nodding your head a fair bit. Is there anything you wanted to add on communication towers?
No, I just did a quick search through the document and I don't see anything that's popping up in terms of telecommunications towers. So I agree with Scott's comments. I don't I think they're silent with respect to that.
Thank you, sir. Councillor Desai.
Thank you, Warden. At one point during the presentation, Scott did mention that there would be some additional studies, I guess, required, which would affect the timelines. I know at some point earlier in this term, the province had shrunk the timelines for planning applications. Has there been any indication that with these additional requirements that they would be looking at going back to the previous expanded timelines? And if not, should that be something we mention in our in our comments? Or is this not the right forum for that? Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Warden. At this stage, county staff haven't seen any indication that there would be an amendment to the Planning Act to change the processing timelines of applications. The timelines would really be affected in in two regards. One would be the the time it takes municipalities to to process the applications. But the other would be the time it takes a proponent to prepare their applications before ever submitting. So if they have to hire the the noise or the dust or or the odor experts. It would take them some time to to hire those experts and complete those studies before ever submitting their applications. And then you are correct, councillor Desai, that it could it could impact our ability to to process those applications in a timely fashion. But at this stage, we haven't seen anything to suggest that that the Planning Act is being amended. We have, I think, flagged in the report that 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 costs and 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 time are both issues in that regard, particularly. We've heard it most recently in in terms of people looking to develop affordable and attainable housing. You know, every month saved is is dollars back in their pocket that could go back to to savings to the future tenants or or owners of that housing. So it is certainly an important consideration that the province should consider moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Warden. It's no follow ups.
Councillor Robinson.
Mr. Warden, I did not have my hand up, but thank you for acknowledging me.
My apologies. I see you on the top of my screen and I can't see the wherever your hand shows. Okay, so that said, I don't believe that there are any other questions. And if that's the case, maybe it's time to call the question. Is there anyone opposed to the motion as it has been amended? I don't see any hands in opposition, therefore it's Carrie. I want to thank you very much.
Mr. Warden, I will just note that councillor Columbus has left the meeting.
Yes, thank you for doing that. I did see her message. Okay, we're on to item number six, C. Stephanie is on deck. We're dealing with the county official plan amendment. And it is moved by councillor Carlton and seconded by councillor Mill. Stephanie?
Thank you, Mr. Warden and committee. Just going to share my screen. Start on page one there. Okay, so again, thank you, Mr. Warden and county council. The following is addendum to to report PDR CW0921. So it's a Thompson County Official Plan Amendment for lands located 20212 Connel Lake Road in the township of Chatsworth. So the subject lands 200 Connel Lake Road is roughly 0.59 hectares in area with 30.6 meters frontage onto Connel Lake Road. And 212 Connel Lake Road is roughly 0.18 hectares in area with 40.5 meter frontage onto Connel Lake Road. The surrounding lands include seasonal cottages along Connells Lake, Robson Lake, Mud Lake, Hines Lake. And there's some natural areas as well as some farmlands to the east. So the subject lands currently today comprise of two separate cottages. There is two separate septic systems, well, as well as driveways and two boathouse structures. These two lots merged on title as a result of a death, and they were sold to the current owners as one legally conveyable lot. The property owners are seeking to reestablish the two lots as separately the lots. The reason for the county official plan amendment application requirement is because these lands are designated rural under the county official plan. And when you look at the original township lot, so in this case, it's 80 hectares in size. The total amount of lots that would be permitted are up to six. However, in this case, there's upwards to 40, 40 lots that are within that original township lot. And that's in part because there's a bunch of lots that are surrounding Connells Lake. Through the, I'd just like to mention as well, through the most recent proposed changes of the Planning Act. We're likely to see fewer of these application types in the future as the Planning Act is hoping to recognize and limit the natural merge merger of lands. Should there be joint tenants and there be a death in in that joint tenancy? As well, just in this case, it the proposed changes to the Planning Act wouldn't wouldn't be applicable in this regard. As the lands had merged and then they were sold as one legally conveyable lot to the now present owners. So no public comments received with respect to this application. Agency comments, there were no comments or no concerns from Enbridge with from SPCA, no permits will be required as no future development. Or no development is proposed at this time. From Historic Soggy Meat, there are no concerns. In Ontario Power Generation, there are no concerns. So a detailed planning analysis was completed from both from all provincial, county and local level policies levels completed. Just like to note as well, the township of Chatsworth defers to the county official plan as they don't have their own official plan document. So with respect to the PPS and county OP, it recognizes recreational and residential uses as permitted uses in the rural area. Because these cottages are situated directly adjacent to Connel Lake, they would be considered recreational in nature. It was also confirmed that safe and adequate servicing can continue to be provided today and in the future by a licensed septic installer. As well, the fire chief from the township of Chatsworth confirmed that there currently is today and will be going forward emergency fire protection coverage to these lots. As well, generally, new lot creation is not permitted as per the county OP on private on private roads. The seasonal use of the subject lands has been long accessed via Connel Lake Road in this case. Both lots have existing cottages, separate wells, septic systems, driveways, boathouse structures. Noted development is being proposed, and there are no recognized risks to public health and safety in this regard. Staff are of the opinion that the proposed development has regards of matters of provincial interest under the Planning Act. As well, under the PPS and generally conforms with the the county OP. A joint public meeting was held with the township of Chatsworth on June 2nd. And the township generally supports the county official plan amendment. Staff see through the reestablishing the two lots, there would be no negative impact to the land use in neighbors as development already existed today. And with that, we're at the end of my presentation. Staff are recommending that the subject report be received and that committee support the proposed amendment to the county OP on lands designated rural and hazard lands. To reestablish two parcels that inadvertently merged with frontage along Connel Lake Road. At 20212 Connel Lake Road, there is a typo in the recommendation. At two hundred and two twelve Connaught Lake Road, there is a typo in the recommendation as proposed. It does say two oh one versus two twelve in the township of Chatsworth and the appropriate bylaw be prepared for consideration by County Council. And that concludes my presentation. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Lacy. Counsel, are there any questions? I do not see any hands. And so with that said, perhaps it's time to call the question. Thank you very much, Lacy. So is there anyone opposed to the motion before us? And that is Carrie. Thank you very much, Lacy. So I turn to counsel now. We've been almost an hour sitting. Should we take a very short break? Maybe? What do you say? We come back at ten minutes two? Would people be supportive of that? Or do you want to press on? If you're, if you want to take a break, nod? And if you want to press on, nod. Okay, we're going to take a break. So I will say we'll come back at ten minutes to two, so one fifty. We'll see you one fifty sharp. Okay, so it appears we are back. Madam Clerk, do we have a call?
Yes, sir, we do.
Excellent. Then I will get started. But before I start, I should make apologies to Stephanie. I did, I'm I'm alerted to the fact that I did call her Lacy at the end of the last presentation. I'm sorry, Stephanie. I think your name, I think it was just your last name that appeared, so. Anyhow, we move on. I'm on to item six D. Now we're dealing with the regional airport study recommendations that puts Steve on deck. This item's been moved by Counselor Burley and seconded by Counselor Keveney.
Your audience.
Thank you. I know the discussion, earlier discussion with the presentation and I'll give you my my thoughts and specifically the recommendation. So been working on this for for some time in terms of of the Wired International Airport. And you know, when I first looked, started to look at this, I had my doubts. I first had to learn the difference between what a registered certified aerodrome is and our and a and a and the other airports in our region. And it is, it is different and it is unique. And it's particularly unique because it has four hundred acres that's serviceable. So the study, you know, when we looked at it, to me, the question is, can you attract investment? And the opportunity is around attracting employment, industry and other and other sectors. And and that's really what we're seeing the opportunity about. It's not specifically, I know there was some discussion about servicing. And of course, if you're going to fly out of your community, you're going to go to the nearest airport and that makes sense. But we're really talking about an opportunity, investment opportunity around four hundred acres. I'm not sure if we added up all the employment lands that are serviced right now in Gray, how much land we'd have? And how how many would have parcels that are twenty, thirty, forty acres? So that's where I see this as a unique asset, in particular, when you link it to an air international airport. You know, right now, every municipal industrial park competes with every other municipal park. Soon as you attach an airport, you're you're competing with a very select few. And 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 that that was that one slide that was shown earlier about Sone. And we can compete. We have had discussions with investors and they they did not question our labor pool. They did not question the airport. They had other questions and and yet so that was telling. But but to to further advance this, we need to, we need to do some more work. I think the study overall showed that there's a positive economic impact if this is built out. And I I do look at the overall positive impacts and on taxes as well, the opportunities. Yes, more detailed business planning would have to occur. And yes, we'd, we can bring in the other airports and the capital, we'd have to look at where we get funding. But you know, we, that study looked at thirty thousand an acre. I think you could probably get a lot more than thirty thousand acre, but that has to be looked at. Governance model, the ownership model, that all has to be looked at and what makes sense. My recommendation is about buying some time to go and explore public-private partnerships. And by that, I mean not just an investor that's looking to put a hanger, talking about land developers who would get involved as a as a true partnership, a public partnership in the overall development. And we've had some preliminary, I would say exploratory discussions with a group and we have planned to have a couple more discussions. And this impacts all the business planning and models and investment. And so that's what the recommendation is about, is about giving us some time to go through that process. And I think part of what I'd like to do at some point is is determine how we might involve some actual council representation in some of those discussions so that you can hear from the investors themselves. It's kind of like fishing, you know, just because you see the fish doesn't mean you got to land it. You got to do a lot of work to land that fish. And while we've had discussions, there's a gap between being investment ready. And you know, we had, we've seen discussions about isotopes and we've seen other discussions about who we might use the airport. And the benefits flow right across Gray County. I mean, I I think about what what may the possibilities of a health spa entalisman? Or if we were ever to land an abattoir or other such developments. It in that in positive impacts are right across Gray County and it's really hard to start dividing who gets what benefits within Gray. And so I know this recommendation is about partnering more specifically with George and plus, but I guess that's what I'm recommending because frankly, I see an opportunity here. And I just want to explore it further. And I I don't know if if the CEO has anything further she'd like to say or or anyone else? Questions?
Thanks, Steve. I'll just, I'll just add that when you look at the detailed report that Lumex provided and and reflect on all of the conversations that we've had. We started this whole project in a very different time. Covid came along and it's really, I think, put a wrench in things. Our economy is changing in a fundamental way. And that's why, in good conscience, we couldn't recommend going further than what we have, which is to just take a little bit of time to really see where things land. And and so that's where why the recommendation is what it is. There's so many moving parts here. We're in the middle of a number of conversations. So Steve and I's best advice was if you can see your way to preserving an asset that you will never ever get back. Well, we are grandfathered to have the aerodrome and the customs clearance at the level that it exists today. If you were going to try to recreate that from new, it would, it would be a multimillion dollar investment. And so again, trying to protect an asset that's already had the benefit of public investment over over a number of years. We believe there's potential here, but we're trying to be conservative and understanding that. I mean, we're all working with a lot of demands for resources and and investment. So whatever you do, we will continue to work hard with the investment community and facilitate seeing something great happen at this site.
You're on mute, Mr. Warden. Thank you. My apologies. Steve, anything else from you?
And that's good.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll turn things over to now for questions, starting with Counselor Soever. You're muted, sir.
I believe Counselor Milne and Potter were up first.
I'll go with you first because that's who I see in in my thing, yes.
Okay, so I appreciate all the comments. And as I said earlier, you know, I think an airport is is a good economic driver. However, you know, without the participation of Bruce County and and the the South Bruce Peninsula, you know, I think we are really just subsidizing a neighboring county, which so I would think that we would want them to put in their equal shares. If they don't, then, you know, I don't know where where we go. The other question I have is in the motion, it says it's a two year term and I see the need for two years because although what we asked staff to get was a feasibility study, I don't think the current study meets, you know, the definition of a feasibility study. And there is a lot of work to do on the business plan going forward. So I think the two-year timeframe is entirely appropriate. But it says a fifty percent contribution to the operating deficit to a maximum of a hundred and seventy five thousand. But when I look at the report, the annual deficit is three hundred and fifty thousand. So that would mean the annual short form is fall is a hundred and seventy five. And if we have a two-year agreement, what we're really being asked for here, although the wording of the motion says one seventy five. I see two-year, a two-year commitment, which I think there's no sense if we start down this road to just doing one year because I don't think all of the studies and consideration and everything can be done in one year. That we're really being asked for a maximum contribution of 350,000 because if the deficit is uh, 350 per year and we're funding half of it, two years is 350, not 175. So I just know if staff could give us some clarification. Uh, what is the ask?
Uh, Counselor Soever, I think you have the clarity with the word annually after 175,000.
In the motion?
Yes.
It says to a maximum of, well, okay, we could add annually there, yeah, I suppose.
It, it is already there.
Well, not in the oh, okay. Well, it's different on the agenda then.
Take a peek over here. Uh, you're, you're quite correct. In the, in the agenda, it, it, the word annually doesn't appear, but in the report, uh, the word annually appears.
Yeah, I was looking at my agenda. So if that word is there, then um, yeah.
You're quite right.
Yeah.
Okay. Next, we're gonna move to Counselor Potter.
Uh, thank you. I do have a, a few questions, but uh, the first one was uh, every year we used to have the uh, Collingwood Airport coming to other municipalities asking for money. Uh, and Collingwood Airport is now totally privately owned and operates on its own legs. And I do wonder whether that model was reviewed and considered uh, in, in completing this study.
Sorry, thank you, Your Honor. Uh, I don't, you know, I think we looked at it, uh, governance model was to look at our ownership in some form, including public-private partnerships. Uh, I, I guess the extreme of that would be a complete private sector ownership. Look at, when we go forward or what I intend to look at, uh, with the private sector is to see the advantages. The one big disadvantage of a completely private uh, facility is that it could get closed or you, you don't have any say in the public good side of it. Although I would uh, I would be open to suggesting that, you know, the private sector could be heavily involved in terms of, and even part ownership and still achieve the public good of having a, an airport there. So um, I think that's part of what we want to explore uh, going forward.
If, if I may, Mr. Warden, uh?
Just one quick sec. Uh, Madam CIO? You, you're muted.
Uh, thank you. I apologize. The Collingwood Airport, which I used to sit on the board of, does not have, um, doesn't have customs clearance. And given its proximity to Simcoe Regional, had to develop a very different and very specific business model, which it has done. Uh, and, and I think development on that property is is a significant aspect of, of how they intend to uh, remain viable. Before it was privatized, there was significant investment made in the, in redeveloping the runways, et cetera, there so that it became a, a product that, that was saleable. So I think there are some parallels, but I do think it's, it's quite a different situation than what we're facing here.
Also Potter?
Yeah, I do think though that we're looking at two airports that are headed in different directions, if I may. The, one of the recommendations is that uh, uh, these lands should be removed from NEC control and Aggris Cartman Commission control. What uh, what other properties in Gray would we be suggesting should be removed from NEC control? That, that seems like a very rare step. And if, if that's what it takes to make this workable, uh, it, it may not even be doable. We, we don't even know whether the province would entertain that idea. Uh, so Steve or, or Kim, do you have any information about that?
Uh, sure, through your, your word. Um, so the NEC, uh, if it's strictly airport related because it's federal, it does allow for federal aviation uh, type activities and, and industry to occur. Um, we did sit down and talk with the NEC and the challenge being uh, their interpretation of what's airport related versus what we might think is airport related. You know, for example, we think a hotel is vital to a airport operation. They don't. And so, um, when you look at the, the, the proposed plan or uh, one option for the planning, most of what is placed in the NEC is doable because it's airport related and that's what we try and do. But having said that, I think the key location of, for the hotel uh, would also be there. And that would be one of the reasons to consider that. Having that designation change.
Okay, thank you. Uh, a couple more, if I might, Mr. Warden, if I might have your indulgence. What evidence do we have that uh, the nuclear industry will use this airport as opposed to others that might be closer?
Through you, Your Warden. Um, I think it was a, uh, you know, I think uh, Lumex had done some consultations. I was in uh, specific conversations around the isotopes uh, opportunity that, that may still be developing. Uh, and that, that's an opportunity there. Uh, whether they locate or move people, I guess is a question. But in general, uh, I think there was some interest uh, in that regard for, from, uh, as, as shared through the consultations with Lumex.
And finally, if I could ask, how many takeoffs and landings are there per year? I think that information is in the report, but uh, and, and storage. And in other words, how much revenue we actually comes from the airport users? As, and, and how much could we expect to uh, look at from them going forward that might help get rid of some of this deficit?
I'm not sure. Sorry, Your Warden. Uh, through your word. I'm not sure I understand. I mean, the, the revenue generated uh, through airport users, obviously lease and fuel are the, are the, are the big, and land sales are the big revenue generators. Uh, the numbers, the exact numbers of movements are in the report.
Well, I, I'm just looking at the, that any facility that we would own, that I would be interested in owning, would be able to generate revenue and uh, would not be at taxpayer expense forever and ever and ever. Uh, I would want to see some some evidence that going forward, there would be enough money coming from uh, the use of the airport by the year, by people in who own airplanes and so on, and store their planes there and take off and land from there, that they would be able to help pay their own way. Uh, we expect that, for example, from Thornbury Harbor. We don't expect our taxpayers to, to pay the uh, to pay for the harbor. We expect the boat owners to do that. So it does seem to me like airports should run in a similar fashion.
Through you, Your Worship. I, your, or, I, I think that's, that's as a principle, I think that's the goal we'd like to achieve is that, is to be operating on a, on a net positive basis. And, and then uh, I, I think you can also though, as, as well include a net present value analysis when you look at the assessment and taxes that, that generate. But the goal, I think, would be absolutely to have the users pay. You know, when we talk about industrial users, they may not necessarily use the actual airport, uh, you know, in terms of movements. Uh, but they may generate a lot of employment and assessment and spinoffs. And that's to me is, is where the value is, although that generates revenue as well. But you're, strictly speaking from the, from aviation users, yes, I think that's a, a good principle and goal.
Okay, next is Counselor Mill.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Um, I, I, I can appreciate uh, Steve's enthusiasm for this. Uh, I'm always uh, I, I always, I place a lot of faith in Steve's uh, and indeed staff's uh, recommendations and their, and their, and their integrity towards uh, flushing these things out. But I have to admit, I am greatly conflicted here. If, if there is such a compelling story here, why has Georgian Bluffs not capitalized on this in the six years that they've owned this? They've put in the order of 350,000 a year into this puppy and, and what have they got for it? And what do they see they're gonna get for it? To my mind, I, 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 I guess if I was, if I was in Georgian Bluff's shoes, I'd be looking for somebody to help me with this too. But uh, financial help alone is not gonna solve or crack this nut. Uh, it's a tough one. Uh, but I, I, it's gonna take a lot of convincing to get me to come around, I think. I'm gonna have to hear some more positive stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Would you like me to answer?
I'd love you to. I'd love you to. Please.
So you're I think, you know, one of the challenges we've had is, is that, you know, it's, it's, you can operate the airport, but then you have to, you have to actually put things in your work plan and have a budget and actually implement. And I think one of the challenges, that's one of the big challenges. You know, if you look at the study recommendations from the feasibility study, talking about retaining experts and spending, investing dollars and marketing and being investment ready. I mean, I, we had the airport operate safely and I say this in the report, it, it's, it's there, but there's a gap. And you know, I talked to an investor or we get a phone call that wants, wants to put a hanger. And you know, where do they put the hangar? What's it gonna cost? Those details aren't worked out and they need to be, you need to have a plan. And you need to be able to go to, go to trade shows and have the dollars to go to those trade shows and talk to people and push, push, push. You know, just having the doors open doesn't mean it's gonna happen. You gotta make it happen. And so I would suggest that um, you know, that's, that level of effort and, and planning and implementation, it needs to happen.
Okay, Counselor O'Leary, you're next. I do see your Counselor Burley. I'll get to you.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. The county has mandatory services such as long-term care, housing, homelessness, social services. The Wyrtton Airport is a discretionary service. And it just happens to lose $350,000 a year. Yon Sound Rec Center is a regional facility YMCA that just happens to lose 400,000 a year. The Yon Sound Airport is it's pretty comparable to Wyrt. We don't have a port of entry. We don't have a bigger runway. But we have flight schools. We have hangars. The area ambulance lands in Yon Sound, transfers patients into an ambulance. Um, orange helicopter lands on the hospital pad, but often refuels at the Yon Sound Airport. The Meaford Range is 15 minutes away. Um, helicopter, we had two helicopters in last night to refuel. We, we have all of those services, but, but our airport just so happens to lose 250,000 a year. So Steve, I guess my question is, how do you differentiate from all the discretionary services in nine different municipalities? And just pick the Wyrtton Airport and say, you know what, we're gonna give them money because they're losing 350,000.
Steve. I, I don't think, if I may, I, I don't think that that was what we're proposing. Or at least I hope that's not how this is taken. We're not looking to, or we're not asking you to accept a long-term proposition to fund a money-losing facility to the end of time. What we're asking you for is two years to try and develop a proper business case and a functional operating asset. Nothing more. I don't, wouldn't ask you for anything more than that amount of time. But it's entirely up to this council if you feel comfortable in trying to support this to see if it can become something more based on the potential that's in the asset. Because of the amount of serviceable land that's in one spot, because of the interest that we've had from the private sector to develop further there. But that's, that's all. Because you're right, Counselor O'Leary, that wouldn't be fair and we wouldn't ask it of you. We're simply doing our job as economic developers. And one of the priorities in our economic development strategy is foreign direct investment. Take an asset that has potential and try and build it up, get it to market and move on. That's what FDI is. And I, I'm sorry that um, this seems to have been taken really badly today. And I, and I, that, a lot of a lot of of thought and work has, has gone into this. And, but we entirely understand if, if it's not something that council feels comfortable with, or we haven't done our job to demonstrate that end result clearly enough, we'll take that back and work harder the next time. But that's all this is, was just can we, can we further develop this asset and, and get investment to the table so that we can move on from there?
If I could, Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Exactly. My point is, is, and, and I get that, Kim. We're, but, but we've picked, we've picked this Wyrtton Airport to have the potential. Um, there, there's potential everywhere and, and, and you know, it's still, in Steve's words, wants to buy time. And you know, how do I support, how do I support spending 175,000 dollars? Because Georgian Bluffs is losing 350, when my own airport is losing 250,000. So we're looking after our own losses and I, I can't support that to look after Georgian Bluffs losses when we're, we're in the same ballgame. It, it's, it's, I just can't support it.
If I may, I, I understand your perspective, absolutely. The decision to proceed with the study and to look at this at all was made many, many months ago. And, and perhaps it would have been more appropriate to have had the discussion about whether or not we wanted to look at this at all before we proceeded down the road of, of doing the feasibility study. So maybe that's where the, where there maybe could have been a change.
Thank you. Are you done, Counselor O'Leary? Thank you, sir. Next is Counselor Burley.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I don't want to get the impression that Georgian Bluffs are looking for a hand. We're not. Yes, we have a deficit of 350,000 dollars a year. While we're trying to do is that we do not have the expertise when it comes to economic development, whereas the county does. All we want is the opportunity to be able to work with the county, the upper tier, to see if it's reasonable that we can uh, advance this great asset we have in our municipality of Gray County. There's, the study shows that there is plenty of uh, opportunities. We in Georgian Bus, we don't have that expertise. We don't know or can't do it. Yes, we've owned the airport for six years. We've kept the airport safe, open and operating at a great expense to our repairs. We as a lower-tier municipality cannot be expected to be able to keep an asset like this operating the way it is. It's a certified airport, the only one in the whole region. It's got great advantages and I really, really feel that for such a small amount of money, we would like to have the opportunity to work with the county to see if we can advance it. And I'm, I'm really very optimistic that we can in a very short time, if we get to go ahead to work with the county, to be able to advance this asset we have in Gray County. It's going, not only gonna help Georgian Bus, it's gonna help the whole county. It's gonna bring in tax base. And it's just, we need that opportunity to have that.
Thank you, sir. Uh, next, Counselor Patterson.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. My comments are similar to Counselor O'Leary's. In Gray County, we make decisions that are in the best interest for all of Gray County. Wyrtton Keppel Airport is unique, but so are the other airports in this region. As mentioned earlier, the Soggy Municipal Airport is owned by three municipalities, two in Gray, one in Bruce. And the stakeholders of the Soggy Airport did have a similar, but very brief presentation about uh, trying to make the airport viable. about trying to make the airport viable. So we were right, it was recommended, we try and attract airport-related businesses, look for somebody like Pirilator or FedEx, plant low-growing crops on the excess land around the runways, sell the lots for building and hangars, and all to make a good impact on economic development. We would love to have some funding to assist us with this. In fact, I think all the airports would. But if we are going to get into the airport business, which I don't think should be a priority right now, we need to be fair to all the airports. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Patterson. Counselor Hutchison, did you have your hand up?
No. Thank you, Mr. Warden, and I think Counselor Patterson has just actually hammered everything that I was going to speak to. And I just want to say the Soggy Municipal Airport, again, as we all know, is two in Gray and one in Bruce. And we're balancing out on our budget. We're just hanging in there, and we're doing everything we possibly can, including economic development. And that's not just only geared towards West Gray, Hanover, and Brockton. It's promoting all of Gray County and Bruce. I agree with the asset. We can't lose it. I totally understand that because I do sit on the SMA and I know how important it is. But I think the words that Counselor Patterson has said is, in all fairness, I think the other airports in in Gray are going to need some help as well. So I don't think it's just isolated to one. If we are going to get into the airport business, then we have to make it right across the consortium, and everybody gets some kind of a boost. Because right now, it's on the it's all on the levy for taxpayers in the three municipalities that support the SMA. And it's got a lot of good things going on. There's economic boosting going on there all the time. We've got all kinds of interests. So that's my two cents, and I'll leave at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hutchison. Next is Counselor Robinson.
Again, Mr. Warden, I did not have my hand up, but I I appreciate that you're watching out for me. Thank you.
You appear right next to me on the top there. Counselor Body. I believe you have your hand up. We can't hear you despite the fact that you've unmuted. No. Still cannot hear you. Maybe he's signing out and planning to sign back in and get things right. Is there anyone else, Madam Clerk, while we wait for Counselor Body?
Counselor Silver. Counselor Carlton.
Thank you, Counselor Silver. Go right ahead.
Yes, thank you, and and I would agree with a lot of the other counselors here. Certainly, you know, my concern is that the communities closest to the airport in Bruce County are not, you know, we haven't gotten them to the table. For whatever reason, we've advanced what we call a feasibility study, which I don't think is really a feasibility study because it doesn't address the economics really. It's a it's it's a nice conceptual study, and but, you know, there's a lot of work to be done. And I think if we're going to progress it, that, you know, it should be with the South Bruce Peninsula and Bruce County because they're the ones that are going to benefit the most. The rest of us will benefit as well, the Gray County as a whole. And any tax increases or assessment increases anywhere obviously spreads the the burden that we all have to carry. So I I'm I'm prepared to support it, but not if we're carrying all the freight, because we don't know if Bruce County will ever cooperate. And there was mention made that these are employment lands that are serviced, or there was talk of a serviced employment land. Well, are these lands serviced with sewer and water? From reading the report, I I think not. And the nearest sewage treatment plant is in Wyerton, which is in Bruce County. So without knowing that they would be willing to extend some capacity to us, we'd be building a giant septic system. And there's nothing in the so-called feasibility study that addresses the costs of that. So I think at this point, the primary goal should be to get Bruce County and South Bruce Peninsula on board. And then, you know, then the cost is shared equitably with the people that are going to benefit the most.
Thank you, Counselor Silver. Counselor Carlton.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I agree with a lot of the other comments. I think definitely Bruce County, Town of South Bruce Peninsula need to be involved. And I would take it that that was the intent with moving forward with a governance model was to talk to them about coming on board. I think another comment would be that whatever we do, wherever in the county, location doesn't really matter. There's going to be a carryover effect to our neighboring counties as well. I think we can expect we get some carryover effect from them. They get some from us. So location doesn't bother me as much. I wonder if it's such an issue with the a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars annually, if we remove that and simply directed staff to look at working toward an agreement, a governance model that everyone could be happy with, would County Council see fit to move forward with that? Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Carlton. That would be an amendment. I don't know if you're seeking to bring a motion in that respect or.
I would be willing to do that, yes.
Okay, because it is an interesting idea, and I would need a second or before we move forward with discussion on that.
I think I would second it, but I'd like to hear the wording first, just to make sure we're all on the same boat, but I do like the idea.
Okay, so I I guess that the the wording, well, why don't I turn it to you, Madam Clerk, because it's so much better this than I.
Well, if I understand Counselor Carlton's thought there is that we would actually remove the second and third clause because both of those speak to the financial contribution from the county and specifically then and please correct me if I'm wrong, receive the report and direct staff to work collaboratively with the township of Georgian Bluffs on an expression of interest that is outlined in the final clause of that recommendation.
Anything else, Counselor Potter, you were.
I just I would second that if we removed to work in in clause four, if we removed expression of interest and simply said to work collaboratively with the Township of Georgia Bluffs regarding a private-public partnership to undertake development. And and I wondered what the mover would think of that in removing clauses two and two and three.
Okay, our CIO has got some something to add there.
Can I understand, Counselor Potter, why you would object to the expressions of interest process?
Well, because we're still moving forward with asking, we're putting the cart before the horse, in my view. We're asking people to give us expressions of interest on something when we don't even know what that something is yet.
If the private sector is willing to come to the table and have discussions about what something is, does this council wish to hear those expressions of interest?
Counselor Potter? You're muted, sir.
Yeah, I just I wasn't going to speak for the rest of council. I would be interested in in hearing whether there's any interest at all in a private-public partnership. If you want to call it an expression of interest, as long as we all understand that that's all it would be, is a written document that says, yes, we are interested in this, and this is what and and they're willing to give us some idea, something better than we have so far of what exactly they're talking about.
Okay, so I'm still, I'm sorry, Madam Madam CIO. I'm before we go much further, I'm I'm still looking to get a mover and a second, but we we're not there yet. We have a mover, but we have a potential second who is saying if we remove issue and expression of interest. Is there anybody, put it this way, is there anyone that will second the motion as it reads with paragraphs one and four and two and three removed? Counselor Burley, okay. So now we have a motion before us that we can have a discussion about. So the motion is for number one and number four, as it's been presented. Number two and three has been removed, and let's have some discussion on that. Counselor Potter, it may be that we we end up going where you want to go, which is to further amend clause four, but for right now, we're going to deal with one and four as they as they exist.
It it may just be that I'm I want to be clear on what an expression of interest is, but I I will take a leap of faith and second the motion.
Okay, we already have a second and Counselor Burley. But we move forward. Anybody else want to have any, Madam Clerk?
Just for clarity, we are speaking on the amendment, and the amendment is strictly to remove clauses two and three. And then, if successful, then we will vote then strictly on clauses one and four.
Thank you for that clarity. Is anyone else needing explanation of what we're doing? I don't see any hands. Okay, any discussion on the.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, I I don't know. Oh, sorry, that's Counselor Silver. Go ahead.
Yes, so I I would be in favor of that, but but I I think it's vital to have the support of South Bruce Peninsula and Bruce County. As you know, any sewer and water, short of a giant septic system for that development is they need to cooperate. So we can progress whatever we want independently, but if they say we've we don't have any unallocated capacity, sorry, you guys are on your own. I I guess the sewer and water would have to come all the way from Yon Sound, which would essentially kill any project.
Counselor Silver, I think your point is well made. But I would say that the 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 language of public-private partnership would include perhaps more than one public entity. It could also include the County of Bruce or other lower-tier municipalities.
Could we specify that if possible, but that would be an amendment on an amendment.
That would be an amendment to the amendment, yes. And if you want to move that, then I suppose we can we can do that.
So, Mr. Warden, if I may, we are strictly speaking right now about removing clauses two and three.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that.
Okay.
Anybody else have any discussion on the amendment, which is to remove clauses two and three? I, oh, Counselor Body.
Just on that, I it I'm I'm kind of babbling here, but I think at some point we're going to have to make some kind of a financial commitment, whatever it is. Maybe we need a report back. I I would have almost wished that we didn't have that motion on the table, but we put it off to let staff come back with a proper motion that we kind of understand instead of trying to rush it through. But I think at some point at the county, we're going to have to put some money in for for something there. You know, trying to figure out how we're going to be involved or how we're going to help. That's just in the motion. I depending what happens, I'd like to come back and speak to the whole thing once we get there. But in a sense, I if it was me, I'd rather see a a small report or something coming back the next meeting with a motion at that point to try and figure out so we're all on the same page. But that's just my thought. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? All right, then I'm going to call the question then on the amended on the amendment, which is to remove two and threes. Is there anyone opposed to that motion? And seeing none.
I see Counselor Greg has his hand up.
Oh. As as opposed.
Opposed, yes.
Yeah, okay. So one opposed, and so I'm going to say that that is carried. All right, so now we can deal with the entire motion that's before us, which is one and four, right? And so once again, that is who do we have moving that? That is Counselor Burley and Counselor Keating moving the main motion, which has now been amended. Okay? So any discussion on on that? We're now talking about one and four. If there's no discussion, then I will call.
Yes, Counselor Silver.
Counselor Silver, go ahead.
I would like to amend that to include the South Bruce Peninsula and Bruce County, that we should work collaboratively with them. Because I think that's the first step is to find out how far they're willing to go, because that will that will inform us as to what is actually possible.
Okay, so your your suggestion is that we add the County of Bruce and South Bruce Peninsula along with Georgian Bluffs. And and that's that's what you're moving as an amendment. I'll need a second for that before we can have discussion about it, seconded by Counselor Robinson. Okay, discussion.
Hey, Counselor Body.
Counselor Body, go right ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I'm not going to support that just for a simple reason that that really doesn't change that we've got one heck of an asset there. And I'm of two different minds, but it's a big piece of property that has room to develop. I know that there's some, the ambulance is going past, sorry. But to I I do notice, I do note that there's some planning controls on there that maybe weren't mentioned in that report. I do recognize that some of the things that were in the report today probably aren't aren't likely to really make it work. I I know from running our airport that hangars and users alone aren't going to do it, so you do have to do something else, however. Steve will know, we've been trying to get a hotel in Yon Sound for how many years, and there's been other entities in the area that have tried to do that. I do know of a business or a a potential industry that would rely on that airport being international if if the international airport stays there, and I think it would be a loss if we lost that international part and the beacons and all the the landing gear, all the equipment that is there, I think is important. How we get there, I don't know, but I I'm just not convinced that having Bruce involved or how we have Bruce involved is a something that would limit us from moving forward at this point with this step to try and see what we can do for feasibility and expressions of interest, because potentially Bruce County or South Bruce Peninsula could be somebody that would have an interest and that we have to look at with the expression of interest. So I I won't support Counselor Silver's motion to amend, but would get the rest of it. Thank you.
Sir, Counselor Robinson, you're next.
Warden Hicks, this is becoming a habit of yours. My hand is not up, but thank you again for calling out my name.
What's happening, I I should explain what's happening is your profile appears right next at the top where where people would appear if they had their hand up. So that that's the reason why that keeps happening. I see Counselor Potter in that position now.
Thank you, but I am willing to be replaced by Counselor Robinson. I want to know that. But I I kind of see this the opposite from Counselor Body in in that I don't think this is viable without partnership with Bruce County, since a lot of the traffic would basically be going their way. And I think it's an unfair burden to put on the shoulders of of the taxpayers of this county, and especially those who are located a little farther away. And yes, I'm all for county unity, but I think we do have to be realistic about who's benefiting and who isn't. And and I think that for me to try and talk to any Gray County ratepayer and say, well, our neighbors in Bruce and in South Bruce Peninsula aren't interested in funding this, but so we have to do it. I would have trouble selling that to just about anybody anywhere in Gray unless they own an airplane. So I I really believe that we need their at least some expression of interest from them. And without it, I I think we have to look at whether there are other options.
Thank you. Oh.
Counselor Robinson is there now, yes.
Yes, yes, thank you. Okay, Counselor Robinson, go right ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden, and yes, I do have a comment at this time. I I am seconding the. Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. And yes, I do have a comment at this time. I I am seconding the amendment now, and if we're looking at feasibility study and we're looking at a conceptual a study, I I think it makes absolute sense right now, right at the beginning to do the outreach to Bruce County and uh uh Bruce County member municipalities that will be impacted by this. This is um the onset of looking at a most intriguing opportunity for Gray County. But I think we need to look at everything involved right at the beginning, rather than on the tail end of things. So I certainly will support this uh amendment, and I hope my colleagues around the virtual horseshoe will do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bro, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Um I really don't think we should be saying that Bruce County or Town of South Bruce Peninsula are not interested in what we're suggesting. If you uh listen to what's going on in South Bruce Peninsula with a fistfight incoming and a new hotel, the new housing development, over two hundred and fifty homes and so on. They they would be interested. It's just that we need to be able to have Georgian Buff staff, county staff, economic development, go and talk to these people and see what answers we can get out of them. And I'm quite sure it'll be a positive all the way around. It's just that we need that opportunity to do that. That's what we're trying to do here today. To start the channel so see we can save a great asset in Gray County. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam C A O.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. I'd just like to clarify um with regard to engaging both Bruce County and Town of South Bruce Peninsula. Certainly at a staff level, there have been conversations um about the feasibility study and and some of the work that's happened all the way along. But if council is is looking for um a formal motion of support from either one, either the County of Bruce or um South Peninsula Bruce Peninsula, I I wonder if there's a path forward where um elected officials are are speaking with each other. If we should be arranging some sort of a forum where there can be some discussion. Because I I am struggling a little bit to see how how this can work. Um, when you folks yourselves are struggling um to see your way forward in this decision. I think unless unless Gray County Council wants to to meet with their colleagues and and have a conversation about this and come to a decision together. I I guess I'm a bit concerned about the out, about the outcome that we can expect. I think we need a different kind of conversation here. Thank you.
Okay. So we are still dealing with the amendment uh to number four, to the fourth clause. Uh, is there any other discussion on the amendment?
Counselor Carlton?
Counsel, oh, Counselor Carlton, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'm wondering, do we need to be specific to Bruce County and Town of South Bruce Peninsula? Does the fact that it speaks to a public-private partnership in the motion not give staff permission to go out and speak to whoever would be interested? And that would include both of those municipalities? So I'm not sure we need to be so specific about who we're directing staff to talk to. I think at public-private partnership, they're able to go out and talk to whoever they need to. Thank you.
Thank you for that. All right, I think we're ready to call the question on the amendment to number four. And the amendment is uh, do we add in South Bruce Peninsula and the County of uh Bruce? So uh on the amendment, if you're in favor of adding those two parties, you will vote yes. And if you're not in favor of adding those two parties, then you'll vote no. So all those in favor?
Mister, could we, could we have a recorded vote?
Okay, well, that that settles what I was just about to do. Okay.
Yes.
Madam Clerk, turn it to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. Um, Counselor Greg, so we, sorry, we are voting on the amendment to clause four to add in Bruce County and South Bruce Peninsula. Counselor Greg?
Yes.
Counselor Gamble?
Yes.
Counselor Burley?
Is he frozen? No.
Sorry, I was muted. No.
No. Counselor Carlton?
No.
Counselor McQueen?
Yes.
Counselor Desai?
In favor?
Counselor Patterson?
In favor?
Warden Hicks?
Nay.
Counselor Columbus is gone. Counselor Keveney?
Yes.
Counselor Body?
No.
Counselor O'Leary?
Opposed.
I'm sorry, opposed?
Correct.
Thank you. Counselor Woodbury?
No.
Counselor Millen?
Aye.
Counselor Soever?
Yes.
Counselor Potter?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
In favor.
Counselor Hutchinson?
In favor.
Motion is carried forty-eight to thirty-six.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we move on. Now we're on to the main motion, which is now dealing uh with uh clause one and clause four as amended, including uh South Bruce and uh South Bruce Peninsula and the County of Bruce. Uh, do we need to have any discussion or can I call the question? I I don't see any hands for discussions, so with that said, I'll call the question. Is there anyone opposed?
Miss?
One opposed, I'm going to say it. Sorry.
But, Mr. Warden, could we have a recorded vote, so we're sure of? You know, because there are some opposed.
I saw one opposed. Uh, Madam C A O?
I I apologize to keep harping on about this, but the way that this will read is that we are to um proceed working collaboratively with the township of South Georgian Bluffs, County of Bruce, South Bruce Peninsula, to issue an expression of interest. So that means that there is going to need to be a motion of support at each one of those councils by my read of this before we can go forward to do anything further. Is, have I got that correct? Is that the intent of this?
I I I think you do have that right, uh, Madam C A O, because I think that that's what members of council were saying. They want to see uh the uh County of Bruce and South Bruce Peninsula involved uh before going forward, or it just won't work, at least. That's how I interpret what what I heard them say. And if I'm wrong, folks.
Counselor Soever?
Yes, well, um, I I I agree, that is the intent. Um, I don't know that, you know, I think we need to have those discussions, because as I've said, you know, a couple of times now, we do need their cooperation with regards to servicing if we're going to service this site in some kind of economic manner. Um, and you know, it's important to know before we issue um, it's, you know, an expression of interest for people to submit to that. They need to know what is possible on this site in terms of, and servicing is a big part of it. And and, you know, if there is no cooperation on that, that changes the economic equations considerably. So I think, you know, that is true. We, we don't we don't need them necessarily. We need to know what their level of involvement can be so can issue the level of expression of interest. It may be that, um, you know, they they don't want to participate at all. And then that changes the content of the call for expressions of interest, because what the proponents will have to provide will be substantially different.
Through you, Mr. Warden, it would be my understanding that you issue an expressions of interest and people tell you what they're prepared to do and what they would be looking for um from you as a as a partner. And then you could determine whether or not you wanted to negotiate further based on those terms. For us to go as staff to go to South Bruce Peninsula or to Bruce County and ask them to participate in an expressions of interest. Um anyway, I'll, I will leave it there. Thank you, sorry.
Madam C A O, I think that what would happen is what people are talking about. Um, there needs to be some discussion. I think you mentioned that, that there needs to be some discussion with those other potential uh partners. And I think it has to be uh elected representatives reaching out to elected representatives. So I I think that's going to tell us a lot about whether or not there's a path forward.
Thank you.
Okay.
Um, Millen?
Counselor Millen, yeah?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And I wonder if a motion to defer this to the next council meeting to give staff more time to have a look at this and and to clarify some of the issues that we're talking about here. This is getting pretty convoluted. And and admittedly, while I have some reservations about the whole concept, I want this to be very clear, because it is an important asset and uh with the potential to impact a lot of people. And not the least of which is the taxpayer. Um, so I wonder if a motion to defer or to table this to the next meeting uh would be appropriate.
Uh, so, uh, Madam uh, Madam Clerk, I'm going to need your assistance here, because we've had a vote. Uh, at the end of that vote, there was a call for a recorded vote. And now we're talking about um about deferring. So I I truly need your assistance here.
So um, there was a, there was a request for a vote, but before, I think we can we can move to defer if that's the wish of council um to the next meeting if if uh if council supports that.
Okay.
The the
The result of the vote was not uh not declared, so at that point, the vote hasn't been considered, so.
Okay.
So I will, I will formally move to table this or defer, whichever is the better word. Defers is a better word. I will move to defer this to the next council meeting to give staff more time to consider a a recommendation.
Okay, and seconded by Counselor Body. Uh, discussion on the motion to defer.
I see Counselor Gambles.
Counselor Gambler, go ahead.
I was just going to second that moment.
Oh, it's, it's been seconded by Counselor Body already? Uh, Counselor Desai? Sorry, did you?
Either I'm frozen for everyone else, or everyone else is frozen. Sorry, I heard my name. Uh, and my my internet has started being affected.
Okay, so what?
Apologize.
I I
Uh, it's been cutting in and out this this whole debate.
No worries, Counselor Desai. I think you were also perhaps putting your hand up to second, were you?
Um, I somewhat, but I I
Uh, ju- just, I already have a second.
Again, I think, uh, I mean, I'm the one that's right here. It's everyone else that's frozen. I'll I'll type.
It appears that we're having an internet challenge, Counselor Desai. I I know, I I have a mover and a seconder to defer. Is there any one that wants to have discussion about the motion to defer? And I don't see anyone raising their hand, so I'm going to call the question on the motion to defer. Sorry, Counselor Desai, go ahead.
I I do apologize profusely. Um, I I just I'm I'm struggling with what exactly um the motion is directing staff to do in terms of, and and again, I'll I'll preface this with my internet was cutting in and out the entire, uh, pretty much the entire item. So I I'm struggling with what exactly Counselor Millen is asking uh staff to come back with, come come back with a different recommendation, because if that's the case, then we can amend the recommendation that's been presented uh to our hearts' content, right? So I'm just, I'm just wondering what the purpose of the deferral is. And I know uh Counselor Millen, uh, with his, the wisest of his words, did elaborate on that, but as I said, my internet was cutting in and out, so.
I I think Counselor Decide, the person with the real answer was Counselor Body, because I think he spoke to that well back. So maybe Counselor Body, if you could uh respond to Counselor Desai's question?
Well, I'm repeating really what uh Counselor Millen said, but it's just to get clarity, uh, give staff a chance to talk to our uh municipal neighbors and then come back with a more clear uh uh information for us to move forward with, so we kind of understand it, we're on the same page, and can vote up or down at that point.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome. Okay, now, are we ready to call the question? Is there anyone opposed to the motion to defer? See, one, two, that is carried. All right. Moving along. We are now on, bear with me. We're now on item E, item six E, COVID relief uh funding update. That is moved um by Counselor Patterson and seconded by Counselor O'Leary. Mary Lou, I believe you're presenting.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So this report discusses the various federal and provincial funding programs that Gray County has received from the start of the pandemic through to the time the report was written. So departmental staff, finance, and H R continue to work through the announcements. And that's to maximize the use of funding entitlements and complete reporting requirements. Uh, first of all, I'd like to s- thank staff in departments, H R, and finance for their work. Uh, it's been a lot of work reviewing and allocating wages, supplies, et cetera. And it's a significant undertaking, as each program has reporting requirements and has resulted in pay codes being created and scheduling and payroll software, G L accounts and report setups in our financial software, as well as having to create year-end working papers to track all of this. It should be noted that when the ministries reconcile the various programs, and some of this has not occurred, um, at some point, any unspent funds will be recovered. And so the various programs are discussed in the report. Most of them relate to long-term care. And I'll just touch on the highlights. So probably the, one of the most uh well-known ones was the temporary pandemic pay that gave four dollars an hour for eligible frontline workers, and that was from April to August twenty twenty. And we used just over one point five million dollars of that. Um, the next probably, next common one was the P S W temporary wage enhancement. It's now been extended um through to August. We had a twenty twenty funding allocation of about four hundred and sixteen thousand and used two hundred and twenty-five thousand of that. And the twenty twenty-one allocation that we're aware of to date is about a hundred and thirty-nine thousand. Social services relief, um, and we brought three reports through to committee on those funding streams. Um, it was used for emergency housing, transportation, food, supplies, enhanced cleaning, P P E, rent and utility arrears, assistance to community agencies, and there was a capital component that assisted with three renovation proposals. Um, the federal restart funding, we received almost three point one million dollars. And we transferred just under two point seven million of that to reserve at the end of twenty twenty. Late in twenty twenty, we were um told that we'd receive another six hundred and nineteen thousand this year. Uh, the new program for twenty twenty-one was COVID recovery funding for municipalities. In March, we found out we would receive almost two six hundred and twenty thousand for this program. And there's a requirement to transfer unspent funds to reserve at year end. And what we're doing right now is looking at eligibility criteria for both the safe restart and COVID recovery funding, and will maximize the use of those funding streams. Uh, there was federal restart money for childcare. Uh, we received over nine hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars, and the funds were distributed according to the guidelines. Uh, there was provincial emergency childcare funding for frontline workers um during the January school closure, and we received forty-three thousand four hundred offset costs. Provincial reinvestment funding. Uh, three hundred and fifty-eight thousand was allocated under this program, and it's uh similar criteria to the safe restart. So for P P E, enhanced cleaning, additional staffing, minor capital. Um, Gray Roots wasn't left out of this. They received a hundred thousand dollars. Um, for long-term care, prevention and containment funding. Uh, they received an allocation of uh just over two point two million dollars in twenty twenty and expensed around two million dollars. And as of March thirty-first, the twenty twenty-one allocation is six hundred and two thousand. Infection pre- prevention and containment minor capital, known as I P A C. Uh, we received an allocation of two hundred and sixty-seven thousand in twenty twenty and expense Uh, we received an allocation of two hundred and sixty-seven thousand in twenty twenty and expensed nineteen thousand in the year. An additional two hundred and sixty-seven thousand's been announced for this year so far. And the three care homes have plans in place to utilize the funding remaining from both year allocations. There was also I P A C Personnel and Training Funding. Um, received in twenty twenty, hundred thou- hundred and twenty thousand roughly was received, approximately ninety-one thousand utilized. There was testing adherence funding. Um, that's a twenty twenty-one program, and it was required to be spent by the end of March. Uh, the allocation was a hundred and sixty-two thousand with fifty thousand u- utilized. Um, good news story for the H VAC air conditioning ventilation upgrade at Lee Manor. It's a twenty twenty-one in initiative under the resilience infrastructure stream. Of I C I P, the Investing in Canada Infrastructure Program. So we're going to receive six hundred and fifty thousand to update update the system. With a requirement the project be completed by the end of twenty twenty-three. Uh, paramedic services. Um, they surveyed us, I think, about four times on our costs, and in January of this year, they announced that we had six hundred and eighty-six thousand in one-time funding for twenty twenty. To submit um costs for COVID-related, so staffing, P P E, supplies, et cetera. And we've been notified so far of a hundred and fifty-nine thousand in twenty twenty-one. And in addition, there was just a recent survey on our costs for vaccine distribution. Um, and that's for April to December. We submitted a forecast of two hundred and fifty-two thousand, and we await further communication from the province. So that just kind of gives you an idea of the scope and breadth of all the different uh announcements, and they're hard to keep track of. And I commend staff for all the work they're doing on this. It sounds simple when you just read the, you know, here, here's how much we got, here's how much we spent. But it's taken them a lot of work to sort through all the hours. And if you have any questions.
Thank you very much, Mary Lou. Questions, anyone? I do not see any questions. Oh, Counselor Soever. You're muted, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and it is indeed a lot of work to keep track of all all these uh different grant programs that the province uh has distributed. Um, there was a phase two application-based funding, which we did not apply for as the county. Um, and I understand there may be additional funding which may be coming, which might be application-based as well. Um, are are we, uh? Are, w- why didn't we apply for the phase two funding, and are we in a position to apply if there was a similar funding coming forward?
Through you, Mr. Warden. We did not make application under phase two, because we did not have costs that were were um not covered by the funding we received. So, for example, with the restart funding that we did receive, we've got money that's still sitting in reserve. And I guess I'd have to look at what the criteria is for any application-based funding to see whether um we're eligible. The municipalities that did apply did not have enough money from the safe restart funding. So, um, I guess because we don't offer the services that they just, they serve. Um, that's how we are in a position where we didn't qualify to apply.
Uh, thank you.
You're welcome. I don't see any other questions, so perhaps if we're ready to call the question. Anyone opposed to the motion before us? Seeing none, that is Carrie. Thank you very much, Mary Lou. We are now on to item six, uh, six F, the update on Patrol D property. Our C A O is on deck. It is moved. Moved by Counselor Disa and seconded by Counselor Robinson. Um, C A O, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. County Council, we last uh spoke to this issue on May twenty-seventh, where um we discussed the correspondence that was distributed to all of you. From the Old Durham Road Black Pioneer Cemetery Committee, and at that May twenty-seventh meeting, we committed to bring back a report. Ha- after we had had further discussions with the committee members. We uh had a virtual meeting, senior staff, uh, the warden, the deputy warden, with the committee members and others on June the first. And on June the eleventh, um, some staff members, along with the warden, um, attended the site, the cemetery site, and had uh further discussions. Um, with the cemetery committee. Subsequent to that, the county and the cemetery committee issued a joint press release, which I believe you all received. Um, where the cemetery committee acknowledged and supported the county's resolve to work with us and other organizations. To increase the visibility of the county's black history, raise awareness, nurture and support community group efforts in this regard. And bring better heritage awareness to all its staff and departments. We will support their efforts to this end. So, as a result of of all of that activity, you have the the resolution that was formed on that basis, which was that um. Staff be directed to take no further action toward the per- purchase of the forty-acre parcel in Gray Highlands as a site. For uh Transportation Depot, and that staff would resume the search for a suitable Patrol D depot location. And bring forward a report to council at a future date. I want to tell you today that on Tuesday of this week, uh, we received further correspondence from the cemetery committee. That correspondence will be provided to you as part of your agenda on July the eighth. In the uh June twenty-second correspondence, uh, in part, it states. "We join a growing number of interested community members in recommending that the county purchase this property," meaning the Gray Highlands property. "For the purpose of establishing a commemorative and interpretive space for Gray County's historic black settlement and settlers." So, uh, what I would put forward today is, if you wish to consider. That information further in the correspondence that's just been received, you may wish to um. A defer a decision on this recommendation for today. Um, you'll note in today's report, under the legal and legislated requirements. Um, if the county does not formally waive its conditions, we had two sets of conditions in the in the offer to purchase the property. One was about um satisfying ourselves that the property was appropriate for um construction of a depot. Those are the conditions that have to be waived by four P M on June thirtieth. Subsequent to that. Um, there's another set of conditions. Which just allowed time for county to pass a bylaw in to finalize the purchase. So, if you want to defer the decision on what to do with the property for now, um. We can uh waive the site-specific condition on June thirtieth. That still. Provides you with another future date to make a decision closer to August. About whether or not you wish to proceed any further with this particular property. So I'm sorry for the the late-breaking news here, um, but I wanted you to be apprised of the information as we have it right now. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from anyone?
Clear.
I do not be, yeah. Counselor Potter, go ahead.
Thank you. I, uh, the only comment I was going to make was to thank the C A O and staff and uh those counselors involved. Uh, for making the the right decision. With this property, and I would be very glad to move that we uh accede to the C A O's request that we uh defer this. As she suggested, and I didn't catch all the wording, but uh I would be happy to to uh move that.
Okay, I'm looking for a seconder. Seconded by Counselor Robinson. Any discussion on the motion to defer?
So I, Mr. Warden, if I may, and I I may look to um Mr. Laterno. If we're going to defer, we do need instructions to staff to waive the first set of conditions. Um, because that is due by June thirtieth.
So perhaps that forms part of the motion that we staff are instructed to waive the first set of conditions and defer this item to uh to the next meeting?
I I would need the clerk's help with wording on on that, if she if she would be so kind.
Certainly, I I think it would be um that the report, um, C A O, our C W oh eight twenty-one. Um, update on Patrol D property be deferred to a future meeting, and I'm not gonna um. Tie it to the next meeting, but it certainly will be within the next uh one or two meetings. And that staff be directed to uh waive conditions. The first set of conditions surrounding site inspection and investigation um by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
All right, any discussion? Then I will.
Oh, I see Counselor Millen.
Yeah, Counselor Millen.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Um. I'm just wondering, um. If we're being fair to the current owner of that property by stretching this out uh longer. Um. The real estate market, what it is, um, they may or may not have an opportunity to sell this property at a higher price, given that. Uh, the time that has transpired since we've initially had uh expressed an interest in this property. I just, uh. I just wonder if maybe, you know, if if we truly do decide that this is what we want to do. Do we wa- do we not waive the condition, let this, the potential sale lapse? And then at a future date, if we do decide to buy it, um, you know, we can go into the market again. Just a, just a thought. Thank you.
Any other uh discussion? On the motion? So we're still dealing with a motion to defer. And I guess I will now call the question on the motion to defer. Is there anyone opposed to the motion to defer? I see.
I see a few.
Yes, I see a few, but nevertheless.
Just, just point of order, Mr. Warden. Did we actually have a motion to amend the recommendation?
We have a motion to defer the report. And to direct staff to waive the first set of conditions relating to site inspection.
Very well.
And that was duly moved and seconded.
Okay, Madam Clerk, did you catch, uh?
No, I'd I'd asked anyone opposed to.
Once again, anyone opposed, if you could just raise your hand?
One, two, three, four, five, six. Some don't have their cameras on, Mr. Warden, so I I.
Madam Clerk.
I'll ask for a recorded vote, please.
Thank you. Okay. So you're voting on deferring the report and providing instruction to counts or to staff? Counselor Greg?
Yes.
Counselor Gamble?
Sorry, no.
Counselor Burley?
No.
Counselor Columbus, or sorry, Counselor Carlton?
No.
Uh, Counselor McQueen?
Yes.
Counselor Disa?
Opposed.
I'm sorry?
Opposed.
Thank you. Counselor Patterson?
Opposed.
Counselor Patterson?
Who's opposed?
Opposed. Thank you. Warden Hicks?
Yay.
Counselor Columbus is here. Counselor Kevany?
Yes.
Counselor Body?
Opposed.
Counselor O'Leary?
In favor.
Counselor Woodbury?
Opposed.
Counselor Millen? Pardon me? I'm sorry, could I have that response again?
No.
Thank you. Counselor Soever?
Yes.
Counselor Potter?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
In favor.
Counselor Hutchinson?
In favor.
Motion to defer is carried forty-eight to thirty-six. You are unmute, Mr. Warden.
Thank you for that. Um, do we need a break, folks, or do we want to move straight into a closed session? Anyone that needs a break, nod your head. And anyone that wants to move forward, nod your head. I'm seeing more people wanting to move forward, so why don't we do that then? All right, so, uh, yes, go ahead.
Um, just a request, um, going into your closed session, I I'm really, can't say that I'm prepared for that or had any discussions prior. I've enjoyed my time with County Council today, and thank you, and with your permission, I would like to leave your meeting.
You have my leave.
Thank you. Take care, everybody.
Thank you very much. Nice having you on board. Okay, so we have a um, a motion to going to close the session, moved by Counselor Hutchinson. And seconded by Counselor Disa, and the purpose is to deal with the labor relations or employee negotiations. Uh, anyone opposed to that uh motion? And seeing none, that.